Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular Town Council meeting for Monday, September 16th, 2013. We will have an executive session following, immediately following, the meeting related to personnel and also to contract. First item is Pledge of Allegiance. Deputy Mayor, could you lead us, please?
Pledge of Allegiance is to reply to the flag of the United Nations, our America, to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice alone.
Thank you. We do have a proclamation tonight. This is a proclamation. Whereas blood cancers currently afflict more than 1,012,532 people in the United States with an estimated 140,310 new cases diagnosed each year, and whereas leukemia, lymphoma, and myeloma will kill an estimated 53,010 people in the United States this year, and whereas Leukemia and Lymphoma Society through voluntary contributions is dedicated to finding cure for these diseases through research efforts and the support for those that suffer from them, and whereas LLS maintains an office in Wilton and Meriden to support patients with these diseases and their family members in the state of Connecticut, and whereas the state of Connecticut is similarly committed to the eradication of these diseases and supports the treatment of its citizens that suffer from them, and whereas the state of Connecticut encourages private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs that address these diseases. Now therefore be it resolved that the state of Connecticut joins with LLS in designating the month of September 2013 as Leukemia, Lymphoma, and Myeloma Awareness Month to enhance the understanding of blood-related cancers, to encourage participation in voluntary activities to support educational programs and the funding of research programs to find a cure for them. And witness whereof by the authority vested in me as mayor, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be affixed the 16th day of September 2013. We have no hearing items, so we will move to public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Colantonio.
Can I take attendance?
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Counselor Drake?
Here.
Counselor Hurley?
Here.
Counselor Kotkin is away. Counselor Minusos?
Here.
Counselor McAllister may be late. Counselor Montanari?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Deputy Mayor?
Present.
And Chairperson Hammond?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Now, Mr. Colantonio.
Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. At the August council meeting, the superintendent of schools answered a question regarding the need of existing and proposed gate at the southeast parking lot for the high school. His answer was, during the day, traffic that is headed south on Walker Hill Road and then west on Route 175, avoid the traffic light by taking a shortcut through the school drive and parking lot. I guess that's what it was. The gate is usually closed during the day to prohibit that movement, which is good. I like it. Now, is it just possible that the reason we have twice as many cars than Hillcrest Avenue because traffic headed to Silas Dean Highway from north of Walker Hill Road and east of Nut Street there choose to take Morrison Avenue to avoid the traffic light on Nut Street and Silas Dean and the stop sign on Hillcrest Avenue? The town has chosen to install a gate and proposing a new gate for the renovation of the high school and yet refuses to install a stop sign on Morrison Avenue, what is required due to a substantial sight line from Tipton Road, or remove the existing stop sign on Hillcrest Avenue, whereas the town, as stated on more than one occasion, are not needed whatsoever. Again, let me state some facts. The town has refused to install a stop sign on Morrison Avenue based on the reason that there is not enough traffic to warrant a stop sign. I have pointed out on many occasions that the traffic on Hillcrest Avenue is half the traffic that are Morrison Avenue and has two stop signs at Orchard intersection. I am not aware of any reason for the stop sign on Hillcrest Avenue even though the road meets all the town standards. Morrison Avenue does not. I have also pointed out that originally Morrison Avenue was never connected to Silas Dean Highway, never, for many years. For unknown reasons Morrison Avenue was connected to Silas Dean Highway around 1955. I have also pointed out to you that the intersection side distance from Tipton and Morrison Avenue is 232 feet, as measured by the town. This distance is only good for 25, 24 miles per hour. Most of the traffic goes at a speed of 31 miles per hour. Fifteen percent of the traffic goes faster than 31 miles per hour, and the posted speed is 25. I don't know how we can get away with this. Something is wrong. Something needs to be done. Between Tipton Road and Orchard Street Morrison Avenue has no snow shelf on the south side and only two feet snow shelf to the north, and it's less than 24 feet wide at the intersection with Orchard. I've also reported to the town that on a normal school year, there are over 45 students attending Silas Dean Middle School that cross Morrison Avenue at the most unsafe location of the street. Remember, Tipton intersection is safer for only 24 miles per hour and the 85th percentile is 31 miles per hour. Same complaint, different location. I believe that the intersection side distance from Beverly Street on Walker Hill Road is not adequate for the posted speed on Walker Hill Road, and if it's not too much of an inconvenience, I would like the town to take a measurement to see if the intersection is safe for the posted speed. Charter Road from Route 3 to Town Line Road has three T intersections, and every one has two stop signs. Past Town Line Road into Rocky Hill, the first intersection has no stop sign. I wonder what does the town of Weathersfield know that Rocky Hill does not? Charter Road has also signs warning of stop signs ahead and additional signs for no true trucks. What are the requirements for this sign? Can I get some on Morrison Avenue? No true trucks? By the way, I am, I live there, and I'm retired, so I'm always watching TV, but I see the Lamore trucks going towards Silas Dean five or six times a day, but never in the other direction. You wonder why? I understand that over the years, the town has installed many stop signs at the request of the residents without checking the need for it. That does not mean that the town has to refuse to install a stop sign even though I have shown that such a sign is warranted. Again, the only conclusion that I have is that town officials do not care to the fairness, safety, and the quality of life of the residents, and I would like to request again for a second opinion regarding the need of a stop sign for the safety of the pedestrian and the many students walking to middle school. For the residents watching this at home, I hope that no one has any concern regarding the way the town operates, because if you do, good luck to you and yes, it is voting time and hope that everyone remembers the way this council has performed in the past few years. Now, I have to say a comment about last meeting. At the last meeting, I was disappointed. The way the town commented on the trimming of trees close to the power lines, it seems that the utility company cannot win. When the power goes down due to fallen trees on the electric line, people always complain, and when the trees are removed, they also complain, while you can have the cake and eat it too, I guess, you know? The major complaint was the way these trees were trimmed. I have to ask the question of where was the town arborist? When I have a contractor coming to my house to do work, I make sure that I'm there while he is doing the work. In this town, during work done by any contractors, the town disappears. I guess it is better to get blamed for not being there to check the work done by others than to be blamed for being there and not know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Other members of the public wishing to speak? You had your hand up in the back?
Hi, my name is Sharon Perkins. I live at 55 McMullen Avenue. It's a small group of us here. We brought a concern with regard to the speed and traffic volume on our street and sent a letter to Jeff Bridges asking for some calming devices and some possible research that could be done, and Jeff followed through with that, and we see that a monitor has been placed. I'll say no more about where, except the location of it seems to be contrary to where our concerns for the level of speed accelerates in the middle of the street, and it's favoring the north side of McMullen Avenue. When we have consistently people come off of Victoria Road on the south side and accelerate at robustly up through our street, and it's in the middle of that street or so is where they really hit the highest level, I guess, the fastest that they're going. So, I'm just, we're just here to, not knowing how the device works, but to just voice our concern that perhaps its location would be at a point where cars would begin to decelerate. And if we're trying to capture the height and speed, is it the right location? So, I just wanted to bring this up today and thank Mr. Bridges, by the way, for following through with going to the police department without concern. Okay? And that's what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Sekus?
I wanted to talk about several different things, but one was, you know, stop signs is one thing. Sidewalk repair is another thing that I haven't mentioned in a couple of years, but there's some places in town that really need it bad. But it's one thing I want to, no offense to Town Council, I wouldn't, I'd like to use it as a platform for an idea. We have basically five different fundraising groups' activities every year. The Irishman Dinner of the Year, the Safe Graduation Dance, the Unico Pasta Dinner, the Taste of Weathersfield, and the Friends of the Mission Center Spring Dance. Now, these events cost from 25 to 30 to the Unico Dinner, if you buy tickets, close over 20. My idea is to help each other help each other. We all have friends that they might not, won't need anything. They don't, I can't buy them anything, they don't want anything. No Christmas gift, no anniversary gift, no birthday gift. My idea is limited to 100. 100, you could say, passes, 100 tickets that would cover like all four, five events if these different groups might want to consider it. Mr. Hurley's involved the Irishman Dinner. If you stop and think about it, if you sell 100 tickets at maybe $100 or $125, that's like a few thousand dollars to each organization, and a lot of people wouldn't even go, but it still would help the causes and it would help us get more interactive with one another and hopefully help one another, as we should be in many ways. And I'd just like to plant that as an idea because there are people here from Historical Society, Safe Graduation, the Unico, Irishman Dinner. I just want to have an audience, so I don't mean to hog the floor, so I will leave it there, and I just want to say, for all those listening involved, those different groups, give it some thought. Who knows? If not this year, upcoming, maybe next year, something like this could happen and you're bound to make more money than the prior year. And when it comes to fundraising, don't forget, raising money at the end and the first three letters, "Fund." I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sekus. Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. My understanding is that you are purchasing the town, a new townwide radio system, and of course, it was not unanimous in the vote. I also understand from, that we're also, and that radio system is going to cost us from what I think our town assistant manager indicated, $3.6 million. I also understand that you're also going to, or considering purchasing a warranty program for another $1.5 million for this same radio system. A radio system that was not even put out to bid. A radio system that is now replacing something that was in, put in service 11 years ago with a 20-year mortgage or payment plan on it, and we still owe nine, eight or nine years' worth of money on the current system that we have, and now you want to put another one in. And I, I just, you know, heads should roll if the system was bad. But Mayor, I have read so little in the newspaper or heard from this council over the last four years of any mention. It was only once, and I think it was prior to your coming on board as mayor, that one of the council members talked about that system, and they called it, they had a problem and they called it an anomaly. What kind of problems you've had since has been kept quiet, if you've had any? But by keeping things quiet sends a message when you do try to bring it out into the open, that something is wrong. And I don't believe you should be buying that new system. You should be living with what you currently have. We have a 20-year payment plan on it, buying another $1.5 million package for it to protect it, warranty? I don't think you need to do any of that. Stick with the old one and save our money. There was an article in the Hartford Current just recently about a surplus that could top $1.5 million for the town of Berlin. Obviously, they were proactive in trying to hold down their costs. Their budget is 73 million, ours is 84 million. We should be, we should have been trying to save money. But as we heard from the Board of Education, they spent everything. I don't know how the town is, if there's any, anything left over, but we should have saved, with an $84 million budget, we should have saved some money. Several million dollars. One and a half million dollars instead of spending everything, because we've been hearing about this bad recession, the bad times. Some people think it's getting better. It's not getting better. We've need, we need to continue to hold the line on spending, and this council has not held the line on spending. Our general economy, as reported in the Hartford Current, was, went down 9 percent. Yet, spending kept going up. If you would have gone down every year, every year, something, we would all be in equilibrium. Now, the town is, is, is just flushed up with money because they're taxing the heck out of us. Our taxes continue to raise, raise upwards, and, and the economy continues to be bad, and it's going to continue. We, what do we have? 8.1 percent unemployed people in this, in this state. We have people that have given up looking for jobs. We have people that have never even gotten a job after school, after high school, after college. And when some of them do get jobs, they're, they're poor jobs, poor paying jobs, and, and here we are. We just keep spending and spending and spending. Where do those people go? They can't come here. It's too expensive. They have to go somewhere else, and that's out of state, head to Texas, head south, go somewhere. And as we lose that base of people, those workers, the workers who would pay taxes if they had jobs, we just continue to lose. And, you know, that's the management we have in the state of Connecticut and the state, in the town of Weathersfield. We're just continuing to lose. This, this, this radio system is a real burner. 11 years with the old system, and got to get rid of it. And like I say, if it has had problems, you've kept it so quiet as a secret from the public. And you know, a lot of secrets happen. You know, we had that 680-some-thousand-dollar chargeback from the state of Connecticut. When you spoke, when you, people spoke about it that night, nobody mentioned the amount of money, because you wanted to keep it quiet. It was only because I came up here and asked, and it took three times to get the money, three times to ask, and finally, Mayor, you did give me the number. 680-some-thousand dollars we had to pay back, and that was for school renovations. Did the schools pay back? Did you take the money out of the school system? No, you took it out of our system, the town side, and, and we, we all got hit again. That's because Mr. Drake over here and his team on the building committee tried to push some things through that were not qualified, and they did whatever the work was, and you got no reimbursement in the end for that stuff. Where here, we say, oh, everything we do, we got to get reimbursed from the state in order to bring the costs down somewhat. We, we lost all that opportunity. And now, Mr. Drake is running for reelection, nobody should vote for him. He's really done a poor job. And, and there's more up here. I mean, have we had shared services put into, into place into this, in this town? Mr. Hurley, four, three and a half years ago, was, was anointed to work with the town side to bring in shared services. And do we have shared services with anywhere under his leadership? Not at all. Matter of fact, the Board of Education went out and hired a personnel manager slash finance manager for 140-some-thousand dollars and blew that whole consolidation of the finance right out the wall, right, right out. I mean, no sense. It should have happened quickly, and it should have been implemented. We could have saved money, but not in Weathersfield. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to... Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Cobb.
I don't know how to follow that, but my subject is pretty much the same. Not suggesting that all of you get thrown out, but I've gotten to know most of you pretty well. Some of you even consider friends, although you may not consider me a friend. I've come up with several ideas where the property taxes could be lowered, you know, over the months, and after I present these ideas, nobody ever calls me. I think, I almost get the feeling that you feel that, hey, this is a good place for people to vent and forget them, but, you know, it's election time. Last year, somebody asked me when I ran, what the first thing I would do if I were elected. I said, well, I'd ask for an immediate recount. This time, I think, you know, I wouldn't do that, and I'm going to make an effort to, to win. And the reason for it is that I'm disappointed with you guys. This point of not having a resolution, asking the town manager and all department heads to make it a test in everything that they do, where they might lower costs, and we haven't had a resolution like that. I've asked for, you know, these audit committees, they work very well in other towns, and they're not criticisms, they're, these audit committees are to help in efficiency and hopefully to lower taxes in that way. And it's the property tax we all talk about, that's the main thing. I've been working on a resolution for you, but I find it very hard, and I would like to have your help in presenting this resolution to you so that you can pass it. And I'd like to give you information about these audit committees, but I think this might be best done one-on-one or two-on-one, this sort of thing. So, I'm disappointed, and I hope we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports. First item is discussion of the high school renovation project. I asked Christine and several members of the school to be here just to talk through some of the concerns and questions that we had in regards to mostly the parking. And now that school is open and you've met with parents, just kind of filling us in on how that went and if there's been questions from parents.
Good evening, council. We're happy to be here this evening to answer questions and just be able to give you an update. We're very excited that we're actually going to have the project getting underway this week, and of course, our official groundbreaking is September 23rd at 9:00 a.m., and we encourage all of you to come and the public as well. It's a very exciting time and of course, a time for a lot of change. And for everyone's patience as we go through this renovation project, our construction firm, ONG, you may have seen their trailer on the property, and we're beginning to have our team meetings there starting this week. They have also been going door to door in the local neighborhood, particularly J Street. That area will be impacted, obviously, as the project gets underway, and they are talking with the residents, addressing any questions, concerns they might have, giving out their business cards, their phone numbers to be accessible if any questions come up. I know that you have some questions about the parking, particularly the parking for the students, and I have the superintendent and the principal here this evening, and they certainly can address that issue. I can tell you that working with our architect, we've been able to identify some additional spaces on the southeast side of the lot that will accommodate, I think, all of our seniors who want to drive and park, but I'll, I'll let Mr. Moore address that with you. And then, of course, the issue of the traffic flow, that is obviously of concern to the committee, will continue to monitor as we launch here, and I'll ask Mr. Moore to talk about the communications that has been taking place with parents, and also, maybe, Tom, you could provide the email address, the website address, I should say, for the Board of Ed, where the public can go and get up-to-date information on the project. So, I'm going to turn it over to them to answer those questions, then any others that you might have.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Christine.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Uh, prior, uh, our priority really is communication in terms of the circumstance with traffic and parking on the school renovation. I have had the opportunity, uh, over the last several weeks to speak to three large gatherings of parents. Uh, one was at the end of August with our ninth grade parents orientation in the auditorium. We had another opportunity just last Monday when I had held captive a number of parents who were there for the mandatory coaches, athletic eligibility meeting. And then, just last Wednesday, we had our annual back-to-school night, our open house. So during the course of that time, in three separate meetings, I would estimate that I had an opportunity to speak directly to about fifteen hundred individuals. And in that time, I was able to articulate very clearly the wishes of the building committee in terms of traffic and parking. Uh, in addition, we have our first parent-teacher-student association meeting scheduled for Wednesday. On the agenda is traffic and parking. Uh, again, that will take place this Wednesday at seven o'clock in the high school main, main office. And then additionally, uh, as we try to move into, um, the age of technology, in the principal's blog on the website of the Weathersfield Public Schools, I have some details regarding traffic and parking. I wanted to make sure that that information was out there electronically. Additionally, I had the opportunity to speak to the students in three separate class meetings, more importantly for the seniors and juniors than for the freshmen, and we did have a, uh, I'm sorry, sophomores, and we did have a freshman orientation, uh, just so they understood the constraints that, that we are working under. And as Mrs. Fortunato mentioned, we had initially, I had about seventy-five spots that were going to be available for seniors to, to park. Uh, the building committee really working hard, and I have to give some kudos to Mrs. Fortunato and the rest of the building committee, really looked at some additional options, and it appears that we might have an additional option available to us, as she mentioned in the southeast corner, that would provide us with approximately forty more spaces. Uh, about this time, I have approximately one hundred requests for parking from the seniors. So, again, if that comes to fruition, I do believe that we will be able to accommodate those students. All right, Ms. Emmett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moore. Good evening, Council. Uh, pleasure to be here with you this evening. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to bring forward to you and make you aware of is the fact that we are working very closely also with the Weathersfield Police Department. As you well know, the, uh, project begins in earnest, uh, this week on the eighteenth. Um, the traffic flow pattern is not going to change until on or around the fifteenth of October, so it gives us some additional time to focus in on communicating to residents. I do know that there have been some concerns with residents on Woket Hill Road. Uh, I can tell you that ONG did canvas the western side of Woket Hill Road. We will be meeting with them on Wednesday morning, uh, and we'll be requesting that they also reach out to the residents on the eastern side of Woket, from Wells, um, probably right down to Church. Um, with regard to the police department, certainly, we have our SRO. We'll be utilizing his services in the morning to assist us in holding parents, students, and staff accountable for where they need to park. There's also been some discussion about whether or not, uh, there is the need for a crossing guard at Wells and J Street. Uh, as you know, with Follybrook closing down for construction traffic and Eagle Drive being restricted, this may become an issue. I can tell you that in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, late in the year, we did do an assessment of that intersection. Uh, we had Tom Dillon, when he worked with us, um, actually look in the morning and in the afternoon to see the frequency of students crossing the intersection. And he found that in the morning, there were a grand total of four kids who crossed. Now, with the construction project starting, that may in fact change. So we'll be looking at that as a means of potentially adding a crossing guard there if need be. The other thing that's been discussed, and again, this is at the early stages right now, is the potential of a shuttle bus. Uh, and again, we'd have to locate, uh, a, a place here in Weathersfield which would be conducive to students parking. And we'd also have to take a look at what the schedule looks like with regard to our athletic bus. There's certainly a cost factor involved with that, but it's something we're going to take a look at. Questions?
Counselors have questions? Deputy Mayor?
If I may, thank you. Um, so you're saying you, you had, if I, I know I spoke to some students next door to me, they were talking about a seventy-five parking space lottery, and now you're, you're thinking of adding forty spaces, so it'd be a hundred and fifteen in total?
That's, that's correct, sir.
So, and that, do you think that'll be adequate spacing for the students, plus when you have events at the school?
Well, the, probably, the reality with regard to events, and we saw this on Friday, um, when we have events at the high school, we're going to have limited parking. That's the reality. And, um, we had Rocky Hill in on Friday for the football game, and it was interesting. We saw cars all over the place, up on grass, up on, you know, the snow shelf, everywhere. And then, on the backside of the property, there was about two dozen spots that were empty in the parking lot. So this is going to be an issue of convenience. And I think there are two pieces here, Mr. Council. You're looking at the school day and making sure that we have adequate space for our staff and students to park, and then you have the event schedule, um, where we know full well, for example, uh, our, um, theater programs, the football games, soccer games. Those are going to be time periods where we're going to have a massive amount of traffic in there. So for example, with the Rocky Hill game on Friday, we asked the Rocky Hill Athletic Director to please get the word out to, uh, parents, the carpool. And as a result, I think that we ended up cutting down on the number of parking spaces that, uh, that, that we ended up having to use. Uh, with regard to the students, as you had mentioned, we are looking for that additional space up at the top part of the southeastern corner of the, uh, property to house some additional parking spaces. That would in fact take care of the seniors. And again, juniors have been notified already, at this point in time, during this phase of construction, juniors will not be parking on campus. And that unfortunately is a reality.
So now, just a couple more questions. Thank you. Um, the second thing is, I noticed, there's, the, the Eagle Drive will be shut down, I know, because of the construction, so all the activity really, um, uh, when you speak about J Street, is going to be going in and out of J Street for the majority of the park, over eighty percent, because the Woket Hill Road piece is only for school buses and teachers.
Correct.
So that's going to be a lot of congestion there. And I know you just spoke about Mr. Dillon. Um, I, I have, have the, has the town engineer and all discussed, you know, that, that entrance and exit on J Street is, is, you know, pretty jammed as it is now without any construction going on. You're talking a three-year period to do this. So what, what steps are we taking to try to alleviate some traffic or better traffic flow? I know you made turnoffs on Woket Hill, but nothing's happened. I know Wells Road's a state road, but, uh, you know, what are the, uh, any ideas what you have planned, because, you know, three years is a long time.
Yeah. We know where we want, where we are now, we know where we're going to be at the end of the project. It's these interim phases of construction that we're dealing with, uh, right now. And, uh, one of the things, as, as Mrs. Fortunato just pointed out, with us just kicking off of the construction, one of the first tasks is to look at this very first phase of construction. So we actually have a meeting scheduled, um, this Wednesday with all of our construction staff, the new site contractor, uh, police department, fire marshal, our traffic engineer, who has, who has the lia, who the liaison role with the, with the STC.
Okay.
So we will be vetting any and all of the options that, you know, Mr. Moore and Mr. Emmett have, have put forth, the shuttling, you know, one-way, two-way traffic, you know, pedestrian access, all, all of those things will come to the table, and we'll be making reports and recommendations to the building committee. So we, I can't say that we have any, any permanent solution right yet, but we are well aware of what the issues are.
And you'll come back to us with information on that?
Absolutely.
The, um, the, the parking lot at Follybrook Boulevard, uh, at the end, the gravel lot?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I know there's been a lot of discussion on that, 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 that piece, probably that, that land should have been included in the high school parcel, and that should have been a parking lot. Has any more discussion been done, or is that too late in this period to do anything as far as the design goes?
Well, well, ONG has identified that as a potential area for their contractors to park. There's about thirty-five parking spaces there available today without expanding or doing anything further. It is, you know, a town, a town parking lot, so it's going to, you know, at this point, we're looking at...
So students are, students are parking there now, though, correct?
Winter Greenwood.
They never parked there? No students parked there? So now, that's going to be strictly for, okay.
Right.
So that's the park. So students, you'll still have a shortage then on student spaces for juniors or whoever it goes in?
Yes.
And you're, and you're looking for a shuttle-type program? That might be a three-year scenario?
That, that's something that we're going to take a look at. Certainly, we have to look at the cost factor of it. And the other thing to be aware of also, within the phasing of this project, this, this project is going to morph over time. Eventually, the student parking is going to be on the backside of the building, close to where the fields are.
Right.
So that likely won't happen at the end of the project. That will happen sometime in between. So, you know, again, the key piece here is we're going to need to communicate, we're going to need to assess how we need to make our changes as we move forward with this project. The other thing that I think it's important to note is the idea of having the construction, um, traffic down in that Follybrook area is we want to make sure that we are keeping our students and staff away from, uh, construction workers. It's a safety issue. So we've talked with the crews already about making sure that they're appropriately badged, making sure that they do not have access to the building, they're not mixing in with the students or staff at any point in time. And also, that speaks to the parking. So we want to make sure that they're off in a separate area so that we can monitor them, and then the superintendent for ONG, um, can monitor who's coming and who's going.
Okay. Just two more questions. Mr. Turner, um, you had mentioned in one of our meetings, uh, several meetings ago, that the fill or the, or the, uh, the movement of earth was all going to be contained on the site. And there wasn't, there wasn't going to be any trucking in and out of the, of the materials. But yet, when we had a meeting at the high school several weeks ago, the woman from ONG said that that wasn't correct, and there could be up to thirty thousand cubic yards of fill in and out of the, of the, uh, construction site, all taken out, all being moved via Follybrook Boulevard. If that's the case, that comes to roughly three thousand truckloads at ten, ten cubic yards, a truck coming in and out over a period of time. So I, I don't know how we, how you could have made the statement that there wasn't any fill coming in and out, but yet she's saying that's false. It could be up to thirty thousand cubic yards coming in and out. So can you just clarify that?
I, I honestly don't recall, don't, I don't recall the statement that I made regarding, you know, that no, no fill would come off the site.
Okay. That was at a meeting a lot, two times ago, it'd be in our minutes, but you did say that all, because I had asked that question about, you know, where, where the trucks would be coming in, and you had mentioned that there weren't going to be any movement of earth in and out, it was all going to be onsite fill that was going to be moved from one area to another to accommodate everything. So if you can go back and please check that and let us know, I, well, myself anyway, I greatly appreciate that.
I will.
And then, my final comment to Ms. Fortunato, if you don't mind. Um, the voters of the town voted for a certain referendum to get a certain building, and plans were put in place to, for the vote for the seventy-five million dollars. And in that vote, there was a geothermal system, there was extra seating on the football field, uh, there was, uh, additional thickness of parking, uh, various other things that have now been changed, modified, or deleted in order to accommodate the funds, because we had to make changes as far as the PCB removals and other, other natures. So, do you think the voters are getting what they voted for at this point? Just a yes or no?
Yes.
You do? So even though we're cutting, even though they voted for, for a project with geothermal and extra seating on the football field that's being cut out and difference in parking and things of that nature, you still think we're getting what we voted for?
Yes, I do, because the reason for this renovation is education. It's the education specifications, as well as the violations that the Board of Ed, the town, has been cited for by the Office of, um, Civil Rights for Access. That is the driving force of this renovation, and that has not been compromised.
Okay, I understand that, but what I'm saying is people voted for, for a certain develop, for a certain design, and they're not getting that certain design. I know what you're saying, and I agree with you.
They will not...
So that design's not there?
We will not have the geothermal, however, we will have a high-energy, efficient building.
Okay. And my last comment is, um, at, at the last council meeting, I had mentioned that I think the project, from the numbers I saw, were going to, was going to go overrun, and we may have to go back to referendum for five million dollars, and no one on this council agreed with me. Yet, in the rare reminder this past week, in a comment that was made by a council member, they're up to a two million dollars, so they're, they're getting closer to my figure. So do you have any comment on that?
I can't address that. I'm not familiar with the article that you're speaking of. And I would just remind Council that we have not gone out to bid yet on the next phase that will be happening, uh, in the next coming weeks, and we'll wait for those results to come, and then we'll come to advise you if, um, there is any change.
Thank you. Thanks, folks, I appreciate it. Thank you for your comments.
Counselor Hurley?
I had a quick question on the, the new forty-spot parking lot?
Yes.
I know I talked to you about it the other day, but...
Yes.
When we were in the fir, I was at a couple of those meetings that you mentioned, the sports night and the...
You were held captive.
That, yes. Um, I thought you said it was like tentative, like you weren't sure if it was going to be done. Is there, is there an idea that it is going to be done within the next month or so, that there will be a parking lot there, or...
At the time that, that I spoke, it was tentative, it was, uh, something that we were discussing. Uh, I think it's more of a reality at this particular point in time. We just have to work out the logistics, uh, of exactly what it's going to look like. Essentially, it was going to be a gravel parking lot, it might be, uh, some temporary asphalt at this point, so again, we're, we're looking, uh, at what it's going to look like. Uh, we do have the spot, we know exactly how we're going to do it. But as Mr. Emmett mentioned, it is not convenient parking. Uh, it is pretty far up there, but again, it will be on the school campus, so I, I think that it could work out pretty well.
Okay.
I would just say that we have budgeted for it, so we do have the funds.
Okay.
Other counselors have questions?
Donna?
I'm sorry?
So, yeah, just to, to follow up on what, um, Counselor Hurley, um, said. First, I'm, I'm pleased that there's additional parking for students that's going to be provided. That's probably been the single biggest issue lately that, um, I've received calls and complaints about. The, that additional space up on the southeast side that we're referring to, the timeline is, you're not quite sure yet, though.
My understanding is that it'll be one of the first, uh, items for the, um, uh, the company that's doing the site work. All right, so, uh, within the, the next six weeks, I, I would say, uh, probably they're going to be able to dig that out and, and put something down for the students to park on.
Okay, so it would be a gravel lot?
Initially, it was going to be gravel. Uh, there is the possibility that, that it could be paved over so that, uh, when winter time comes and we need to plow that out, it'll be a little bit easier to plow.
Okay.
But we've not made that decision yet, and the building committee, actually, you have more information on the building committee at the moment, because this is obviously changing on a daily basis. So we've been able to make this accommodation, and we'll discuss that at our next meeting.
Okay. So, uh, is it possible then to consider to, I know that we were talking about the project line, the, uh, the project limit, uh, of the, uh, of the project, to include that parking area at the end of Follybrook, um, to the southwest, um, of the, of the project? Only for, since you're already submitting some additional revisions to the state, um, would it be wise to include that, remove the project limits to include that lot?
You're talking about the Winter Greenwoods?
Right.
Oh, well, that's off of Board of Ed property, so that's outside the scope of the project. So the state would not entertain that.
They, so my understanding is that there's still some revisions that you're making now that are in order to state, so is there any reason why we couldn't revise that project limit to include that, so, um, we can provide some additional parking? Because the more parking we can provide, the fewer cars we can keep off the street and, and create, alleviate the, the traffic concerns?
I, I think the town manager can probably address this a, a little better. As I said, it's off of the school property, so there are, I would imagine, various steps that would have to be followed for that property to be acquired. I would say for this point in the project, I would have to anticipate that could hold us up with the state. But Mr. Bridges may know more about the legality of, uh, the, the property line issue.
So...
Actually, I, I don't know what the process would be to expand the high school site to include that parking lot, but as you heard this evening, that whole area is dedicated for construction traffic.
Right, no, I, I understand that.
If the, and I believe the infrastructure committee met, what, seven, eight, nine months ago on this, and they determined that if, if there was going to be that, uh, expansion of parking or whatever in that area, that was something the town was going to have to consider and, and, and do.
Right. So I, I mean, I guess I'm just not convinced that it's not a wise thing to do. I mean, it's just an arbitrary line on a piece of paper that we can change with the stroke of a pen, um, and, you know, why not do it if, if we can potentially get some reimbursement for that project, which would be good for the high school and maybe good for, for alternate uses as well? Um, and the thought that, uh, you know, I was thinking was if we squared off that parking lot up to the back of, uh, the track fence, so it opens the sight line up to the school, uh, it's safer and more visible, uh, to, to people who are parking, um, and the ancillary use would be, uh, it would open up access to, uh, the Follybrook path and make it, uh, more safe and inviting to, to residents. So is, is that something that, if didn't affect the timeline, could be considered?
It will affect the timeline. It will affect the timeline. It certainly will, because Phase One is getting underway right now, that's the site work that you're speaking of. Mr. Turner just reminded me that because that's a parkland area, council would have to identify replacement land. It's the, I'm not certain if it's the state law, or if it's the town ordinance on replacement of parklands when you take away. And as I recall, early on, when the committee did look at the parking, we were advised that the Army Corps of Engineers would have to be involved as well, and that could delay the project at least by 12 months. So, I would say that would not be the wisest choice for the project at this point. I think we've got to keep moving forward with the renovation as planned.
So, who gave that advice?
I beg your pardon?
So, who supplied that advice?
Mr. Turner, you were just commenting about the parkland ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about this before, so I apologize, I don't have those notes with me. I would say that the town manager would have to investigate that for you, because it is outside the domain of the building project.
Okay. So, if we can get it done, and it doesn't affect the timeline, then it'd be something the building committee would consider?
I don't think it's the building committee's purview, according to what they're saying. It's town land, I think from way back when, it's partly wetlands, it's partly parkland, and I think it's a state statute that if you take, well, federally, if you take some part of wetlands away, you have to substitute another parcel in town, and, you know, if it's going, I can see it clearly taking a year, at least. And we're about to put the shovel in the ground, and again, we're looking at the educational stuff, and I think that's more important than parking spaces at this point.
Well, I think that's part of the educational process, but why do you think it would be a year? I mean, what is the process that would take so long? Identifying, maybe replacing property?
Have you ever tried to deal with the Army Corps of Engineers?
But I'm not hearing that we have to do that.
Stathi, I think this, I think if you listen to what the building committee has said, and if you go back and probably read their minutes, or have discussions with anybody up there, I think they've discussed this ad infinitum, and my understanding, I think the principal also told us at one point that they had discussed that as a parking option with parents, and parents were not happy because it was going to be so far off campus that from a safety point of view, a lot of parents didn't want, not want their kids parking next to Winter Greenwoods where there's been issues in the past, or that far off from the building. So, you know, I think we all wish there was more parking, we all wish we had geothermal, we all wish a lot, but I think we need to move forward, and we're this close to starting the project, and I personally would hate to do anything that delayed it even another day.
So, I...
It's already a month or two past when we were supposed to have the shovel in the ground, is that correct?
Right.
Right. But what I'm asking you is, if all this work were done, and we can demonstrate that it won't affect the timeline, why wouldn't we do it?
Because I think, I think we have a tendency on this council to micromanage, and I think staff does their job and committees do their job, and then we go back and try and reinvent the wheel, or second guess what they did or said, and I think we have staff spend a lot of time on stuff that's already been vetted once, and we ask them to do it again, and we end up with the same result.
Well, I'm not, I don't think we're second guessing them, I think they've taken our suggestions pretty wisely. I mean, this additional parking, just last week, wasn't there, but because of all the uproar, they've changed it. So, I think we're a team, we're not just, we're not second guessing them, what we're doing is trying to help in the process.
But that's, that's, that's second, the additional parking is in a place that is not bound by some of the restrictions that go with wetlands, that go with woodland, that go with protected areas in town. The place they're putting the 40 parking spaces does not have those restrictions, so...
Well, so I'm just giving you the hypothetical still, and I don't think I have the answer yet, is if we can demonstrate that none of that would occur, and it wouldn't delay the timeline, why wouldn't we consider that?
Well, as I said before, I think we just have people waste their time going back over stuff a million times. It's not state reimbursable. I think Christine's already said that, right?
But we don't know that.
It's not reimbursable.
There's no...
It's not reimbursable.
It's not reimbursable. That's nothing to check on.
It's off the site.
From my understanding, some of our legislative delegates have assured us that they would attempt to help us with that.
And they've also, and they're from my party, so I'll say this, they've also said they were going to get us the windows at Webb, and we've yet to see it, so, you know...
So, I guess our legislative delegation is in the...
No, but I think we're asking for stuff that's not germane to the issue. The parking is the parking, parents have said they don't want their kids parking in Winter Greenwoods. It's, right now, it's going to be construction parking, we're spending all this time on parking, that when we should be dealing with the other stuff in the project. But you have, you're entitled to your opinion, but I've just given mine.
Yeah, I know. I think with due respect, I mean...
I think we need to limit the discussion to questions for the building committee.
Okay. Well, the general comment, I think we're taking care of those non-parking issues, but tell, you know, hundreds of families that, you know, that parking isn't an issue, and they're going to tell you, "You're crazy." It is. I guess that's it.
Council Hurley?
So, I think by going to those two meetings, that there was, like Mr. Moore said, there was, I think you said 1,500 people, I think that kind of stirred people up, and since me and Stathi were at the school, we were held captive by the couple of meetings, but we were also held captive in the hallways as we were walking through. So, that's why we kind of wanted you to come down and discuss kind of the parking and stuff. It wasn't that, you know, and it, I do believe that it is our responsibility, even if they have to go over things again, that we should, since we are the council, if we are confused on things, to have you come down and explain things to us. So, I appreciate you coming down.
Well, and I was at those meetings, too, having a child in the school, and had parents coming up to me, and teachers as well, who are very excited about this project getting underway, and I think that's where we're all focused, all of our energies, so that we keep the project going so we can meet our timeline.
Thank you.
Other questions? Council Drake?
Yeah. Christine, just help me on this, I could, I could be wrong on this, but regarding the heating system, the geothermal was decided well into design effort, really had nothing to do with the referendum, because I, at the time, we had a certain fund to do this, and we were actually looking at solar, fuel cells, co-jimmy, so the geothermal wall and design popped up, so nobody voted for geothermal, but we all are disappointed that it didn't get in there, there's no question about it.
Absolutely.
No, there was no official vote on that, because, actually, you were really heavy on the solar stuff, and it just kind of fell the other way, so...
Yeah, I mean, we still have some, we still do have some solar there, we are still working towards a lead certification, so any change that is made, we look at that, and that's why we're still very committed to having, we have to have a high-performing...
No question. I just want to clarify, nobody voted for that, didn't get something to vote for, because we, none of that was so remotely in the design at that stage, it just didn't quite get there.
Right. Any other questions for the building committee?
Just a question for the superintendent. You were nodding your head when I was talking before about the safety issue, can you just talk about the concerns that parents had with regard to safety? About Winter, that Winter Greenwoods parcel?
Well, it's really far off the beaten path, and, you know, we don't have cameras out there, and we're limited in terms of the number of security staff we have out there as well. And, you know, there has to be some line of demarcation as to where you're going to put your construction staff. I mean, any given day, we could have 30 to 50 construction workers on site, and we know full well in Phase One, the other reality here is that we're going to be doing construction in the pool parking lot with the new gym, and we're also going to be doing construction in the media center, which is that lower current parent drop-off. So, the logical point is to put those construction workers down in that area, because it's close to where they're going to be doing the work.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I, just one thing? Putting the construction project aside, not having to do with this, in the long run, would parking on that south, that Follybrook southwest corner, in the next 20 years, be a good thing? It just seems to me, all the discussion I have, if you had 75 to 100 space for football games, events, and that type of stuff, would that be a good thing? I'm guessing it would be, and I just wanted to put the construction thing apart, is there a parallel path that maybe we should look at, or let sleeping dogs lie and don't worry about it?
Well, there are a couple items that you have to consider. One is that we have to pave it, we have to maintain it, put lights on it.
No, 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 I understand that, I wouldn't say do it right now, but is it something that, as a parallel, I think we should look, would you be better with it or without it if you had it?
Well, I think you're always better with.
Really? Because you don't, I don't want to pave everything in the world, just for the sake of paving, of course you're better, would you, are we going to be...
Right. But the difficulty with that is then the whole security aspect, being far away from the school, it would have to be lit, we would have to make sure that it's maintained during the winter, when in fact, you know, we have snow and ice and things of that nature. It is pretty far away from the entrances to the school, but I think for events, certainly, right? We're always looking for additional spaces for, you know, some of the larger football, soccer games that we have.
Maybe you close it in the winter, don't do it in the winter. I just, I just wanted, there should be a thought process, because I think Stathi might have a good point, there's a spot there, that people park there, it's kind of lousy, but is it worth...
In the way that you're, in the way that you're putting it forward, yes.
Other questions? Thank you, Christine. And Mr. Moore, and Ms. Emmett.
Thank you, Mayor Hammond. I just wanted to let the public know, if there are any concerns with regard to parking, my email address is M.Emmett, it's M.E.M.M.E.T.T. at weathersfield.k12.ct.us. And I did get one email from a parent today, so keep them coming. We certainly like to have the feedback. Thank you.
Make sure you get the dots right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other council reports of committees?
We had an EDIC meeting that I attended last week. I'd say a couple of the high points are the revitalization plan for the Masonic Building, and Comstock Ferry, the design team is making changes to the final report, and that will be posted on the town website soon. There was also some discussion about the farmer's market, and discussing creating, or making that a nonprofit, and instead of, and separating itself from the town. So, that's ongoing, and the salute to business as a reminder is on December 12th. That's all for the EDIC. Budget and finance had a meeting as well, and, you know, we're happy to report that we did have a surplus this year, but before I get to that, a couple of quick items, the auditor reviewed the audit process and the timeline, so that should be completed in a couple of months. We also talked about some other things, some position changes in the engineering department with Lonnie retiring, we'll still have one and a half FTEs, but one of the changes is going to be to make the zoning enforcement officer a full-time position, which we think will be helpful. The, as I said, there was a, pleased to report that for the second year, there was a surplus in our, in our operating budget. On the revenue side, it was over $400,000, which will, that excess revenue will go right into the fund balance, which is a good thing, because it'll increase our fund balance percent to almost 10 and 1/4% of our budget, which is higher than the range of 8 to 10% that we had projected as our, as our goal. On the expense side, and the source of that revenue excess was mainly from some prior year property tax collections and some FEMA reimbursements. On the expense side, through good budget management, expenses were down over $500,000 coming from various line items, and we're having some discussions on, on how to reposition those funds. And one of the thoughts was to, rather than lease a lot of the vehicles, to purchase them outright, so we can reduce our operating expenses in future budgets, the lease costs that would be saved are about $87,000 a year, so we think that's a wise decision, and I would support that when the time, when the time comes. I think that's it, unless somebody has a question.
Any other reports of committees? Okay. Moving on to council comments, do councilors have comments? Deputy Mayor?
If I may, thank you. Couple of things, since we didn't have a meeting last time. First of all, I'd like to commend the Weathersfield Police Department on their actions yesterday. I was, I was very amazed. I happened to be, I guess, maybe in the right spot at the right time, or the wrong spot at the right time, but last evening at 6:30, at the intersections of Wells Road and Colonel Chester Drive, there was a car chase ended at that area, and I watched it unfold, and it seemed like it took forever, but it was probably only maybe two or three minutes max that all this happened, if that long. But I just want to commend Sergeant Rivera, and especially Officer Sullivan. The officer was fantastic in what they did, and there was a car chase, apparently, I don't know all the statistics, that kind of stayed away, but they captured, they captured a person after he crashed the car on the corner of Wells Road and Colonel Chester. But the way these guys, in fact, there were five officers, it was like, it was like perfect timing, perfect, it was like a well-oiled machine. Gee, if I know I see you out there, I wish you would just tell them. They did a great job, and people came out of the house, they were applauding these guys. I mean, that's how, that's how efficient they were, and a crack crew, so, good job. Please pass that along, I appreciate it. As far as the WPD goes also, I was in the building last week, and I was in some of the hallways, and I thought, and I looked in our, in our budget, I thought we had put some money in the budget, Mr. Manager, for painting and some maintenance inside of it, but we took, but that's something, well, if we didn't, I thought we split it in half, but I guess I'm wrong. But I noticed the common areas, you know, it's been 10 years, I see a lot of the hallways are looking a little shabby now, and I know it's a nice building, and we fixed the facade, and the soffits outside and all, and, you know, if somebody could take a look at that, as far as like getting some of the painting done, even the common areas would be a good thing to keep the building up to shape. And also, I noticed on the first floor, that some of the areas, there's, appears to be mold, and I'm not an expert at it, but that should also be looked at, too, before that gets out of hand. So, maybe the mold issue could be taken care of, and maybe some of the common areas could be painted. We tend to fall behind in taking care of a lot of the buildings at some point, and, you know, this is one of the newest buildings we have, we should really keep the upkeep going on that, so if you could check into that, I'd appreciate it.
Of course.
I also received a letter, and I know we had a discussion about this, from 579 Ridge Road and the HUD project, and it says, "Dear Mr. Council, Dear John, I am wondering what is going on with my house in the town of Weathersfield. In January 2014, it will be six years since this nightmare started. I have, I have been as patient and cooperative as I possibly can. There is not one person who would be as cooperative and patient as I have been in putting up with this nonsense. My health, both physically and mentally, have deteriorated considerably. Therefore, if there is no quick and favorable solution very soon, I suggest the liens that were placed on my house in 2008 be removed so I can move on. I simply cannot do this any longer." This is, this comes from Paula Romano, and I know we had a discussion on this, and as far as taking care of what went on with Wagner Associates and the whole situation with them, but they, I thought it was done, but apparently, there's all these questions that have, that have now arisen, and they're not sure if the work's going to get done, so can you bring us up to date at some point of what's happening?
We're still working with the town attorney and CDBG on the use of the program income funds.
Okay.
Making sure we can use those dollars, if we can't, the town will have to decide if they want to front the money to fix these.
Okay.
The issue stems from building permits not being issued at the time, and these grants were administered not through the town of Weathersfield originally.
Right. So, that's something you'll be getting back to sooner, I mean, okay. Town Hall, in front of Town Hall, I noticed they've been doing a lot of work around here, and it's starting to look pretty nice in the parking lot area. I noticed they were building a new, new stone wall in front of Town Hall. I'll tell you, I think my, I think my 15-year-old nephew could probably build a better stone wall than what this construction company's doing. There isn't, I don't think there's two stones that match up properly on that wall, and before, before it's a finished product, I really think, maybe, Mr. Turner, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, or somebody could go out there, maybe Steve Lattarula, but it's not coming out very nice, I'll tell you, and if that's going to be the way they're going to do this to finish the project, something better be looked at quick before they put the cap on top of the walls and call it quits. I know someone in the audience discussed the radio program, so I'm going to wait on that, because I'm not sure where we stand with all that, so, Mr. Manager, maybe you could comment a little bit about where we stand with the radios, or is that something...
We're still in negotiations, and the attorney's here this evening to fill the council in on that.
Okay.
In the executive session at the end.
Okay. And there's two more things. Blight officers, and I know I've, I've made some calls into the town many times, and I know there's residents, probably a few of them were sitting in the audience, but it seems like the same homes, there's constant blight problems with specific homes in town that just go on forever and ever. One of them in particular is on Cedar Street, number 77 Cedar. forever and ever. One of them in particular is on Cedar Street, number 77 Cedar. I, I don't know if we have no teeth, or can't do anything with these people, but, and also 30 Cedar Street. But I've gotten numerous calls from the neighbors in that area, that, you know, the town goes out, they look at this, but nothing really seems to get done, and the guy just, you know, cleans up a little bit, and then, you know, several weeks later, he's got this junk piled up all over the place. So what can be done as far as this goes? I mean, as far, I mean, I guess he refuses to pay fines, but what else can we do?
Well, it's not a question of refusing to pay fines. If a person is, is cited for something, and they take the appropriate action to clean it up, then that issue is resolved. If they, two months later, or two days later, decide to do it all over again, that's a whole nother issue. And that's, that's property maintenance. People live in their homes, they use their homes. If they clean it up, and then two weeks later do the same thing over again, it's just another visit.
Well, this, this particular home, I know, all he does is shuffle the, the materials from the front yard to the backyard, back to the front yard, back to the backyard. I mean, it's, I think it's just the same ongoing issue over and over. And I know the residents in that area have really, really gotten to the point where they just want something done with this guy. So if we could move along and try to get somebody back out there to see what we can do, I greatly appreciate it, so I can report back to the residents. And lastly, I know a lot of people also always speak about accountability and transparency with the town, and I've noticed several websites, I know Town of Darien has one, and I believe Greenwich is working on one, but I think over the next two years, for this, for this council and for the town, the website should become a little more comprehensive, and it should contain data that people can use, i.e. financial data, information on the town, as far as, you know, programs that are going on. I know we have some of that out there, but I think the website should really be expanded, especially in the financial area section. And an example of this, I, I noticed, was a website called CityData.com. And I, I went one step further, and on, on my website, which is www.johnconsol.com, I did a CityData Weathersfield.com, which is out there, and anyone can take a look at that website, and it has comprehensive data on all different facts for the town of Weathersfield. And it goes back almost 10 years, and it's something that a lot, a lot of residents that would probably have to come to Town Hall and ask for, if the website were set up a little bit different, could go right under website and, and check all that out, plus all the finances from month to month that's town, that's, public information should probably be posted at some time. And I think that's about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Other, Councilor Hurley?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak up about the people that came from McMullen Avenue. I'm sure you'll follow up. She had good things to say about you and the police department, but she wasn't sure that it was doing what it was supposed to be doing. Would you follow up with that?
Of course.
Other councils have comments? Stath?
Yes, I have.
Sorry.
John, what was that website?
City, CityData.com, or on my website, it's www.johnconsol.com. And I put a website out there that has the City Data Weathersfield information on it, that gathers weather information, all types of different information from Weathersfield over the past 10 years. And if that were loaded up onto our, our website in town, it'd be very useful information for many taxpayers and residents in the town.
So there's some financial data on it now?
There's very little, but there is some financial, but I think that, that piece should really be expanded, where we have the entire budget maybe online, and also all, you know, expenditures every month, and things of that nature, so.
So I'm on it right now, and I don't see, where's the financial data?
You have, you have to get into the website in order to get into the financial data. So you have to get into my website, and then go onto it from there. If it's not loaded, it'll be up and running by tomorrow morning.
Okay. Are you sure this isn't a political, a political?
I'm doing this for the town transparency, for the town of Weathersfield, has nothing to do with political.
Okay.
I'm saying over the next two years, we should do that. One other comment, since you mentioned it, I think the town and our tax bills over the next two years should probably even do a comprehensive survey of how the town is, for all the residents out of town is participating, what they're doing, where the town's going, things of that nature. And maybe the residents could respond back in a, in a survey of the Seattle, of what town is doing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I continue? The only, I have a couple of comments, just to address something that Mr. Young had brought up. On the radio system, I know he thought there wasn't a, an RFP process, but there certainly was, that went over 18 months long, and it, there are reasons why it wasn't public, and that was for safety reasons. And we discussed that a few, several meetings ago, on more than one occasion. So I just want to just correct that for the public, because there was, there was an extensive RFP done over a lengthy period of time, that everybody understood was going to happen, and there was a, an independent consultant on the radio project, and, and we are where we are today, because we need to, need to be. And as far as the, the, the comment on the additional spending, just to clarify again, for the record, over the last five years, the average increase in spending in our, in our budgets has been 1.76 percent. So I think that's pretty good in stark comparison to, to previous years. Thank you.
Other councils?
A couple of things. First of all, I want to, to the town manager and the staff, or whoever's doing it, the front of the building, near the parking lot actually looks nice with the grass and the plantings and everything, so.
Sally.
Sally, looks great. The other thing is, some of us went on, trying to keep life positive in, in response to tragedy. Again, Judy Keane and the Keane Foundation had the town picnic a week ago, Sunday, and several of us attended, Deputy Mayor Mike Hurley, myself, Paul, were you there, Dave? No? Okay. But it was a very nice event, a good band, a lot of socialization. The fire department was there, and it was a nice town, it's always a nice town event, and it's nice to see that she's done so much for the town despite her own personal loss. Also, on, actually, on 9/11, I went to the police academy graduation, and one of our, our newest members, Justin Hilcheck, graduated that night, and so it was really nice to see him, and to see the process. And there were 50 people that graduated for a variety of surrounding towns, and they showed a film on the training, and oh my God, it's really, starting with the first day, where you have literally 15 people yelling at you all day long, down to some of the physical stuff they had to go. It's pretty amazing training, so I want to welcome him to town, and I'm sure he'll be a great addition to the department. And also, as a follow-up to something that Stathie said about the EDIC, there is, that this Friday night, there's a farm-to-table dinner sponsored by the Weathersfield Farmer's Market. It's this Friday, 6:00 PM at Solomon Wells, it's $85, it's put down by Jay's Restaurant, in conjunction with other local businesses in town, Town Line, Town Line Liquors, Richard Keane Foundation. And if anyone's interested in attending, they still have tickets available. The person to call is Stephanie Jarm, and her phone number is 860-539-8318, 8318. And we always talk about sustainability in local farms, and I think this would be a good event for people to try to attend if they can. I think that's it.
Okay. No one else?
Just a quick question. Stath, you mentioned the, the farmer's market thing, switching to a nonprofit. Could you just tell me what that, what the thinking is, because I didn't follow what the, what you meant?
So EDIC, they're debating with, you know, Doug Sacks, first of all, who's been running it these years, has done a great job with the event, and now they're going to have a, a discussion on the merits of operating it as a, a nonprofit, as opposed to, you know, a function of the town. So that's, that's really.
Take the expense off, and then the vendors would basically contribute to a, some type of organization where, you know, they'd cover their expenses, whatever, but.
Right, so basically run as its own self-sufficient operating entity, as opposed to, you know, running with some support from the town if necessary, although, you know, now there's limited support from the town, but.
Yeah, so, but it, would it, would it then not be identified as a town function, it would just be an independent function that happens to be in town?
Right, if, right, I mean, Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't think they've gotten that far in that thought process.
Okay, yeah, just want to follow up with that, because I know Doug, like you said, Doug done a great job.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I just have a couple of communications. We received a note from the Connecticut Siding Council that there's been a request to modify communications facility on Kellaher Court. The other thing is, we got a communication from the LT Grasso Lodge, number 2538, and there's several different activities that are ongoing. I will pass this to Delores, so that she can hang it up on the bulletin board in the hallway. And then, the final thing is, just a reminder, September 20th, 2013, is National POW MIA Recognition Day. This is generally the day that they do the stand-down at the Rocky Hill Veterans Home and Hospital. And so just a reminder that that will be occurring this Friday. So thank you. Mr. Town Manager?
Thinking about it, Mayor Council, two things this evening. First, after many years of working on it with the Capital Region Regional Council of Governments, Capital Region Council of Governments, the bus shelter project is getting closer to a reality, so we have a proposal from CROG to look at nine locations for their new bus shelters. I would ask that the Infrastructure Committee meet over the next couple of weeks to review that, and make sure the locations and the style of the shelter is appropriate. There's one in the Historic District, which we will, of course, have to vet through the Historic District, but there's going to be some advertising on these to help pay for maintenance, so we would probably want to meet with this Infrastructure Committee pretty soon. Secondly, just on the manager's report, we have met with CLNP regarding two separate items relative to tree trimming. One is, how, if they go forward, how do they do that, under what conditions, and what kind of plan do they propose? They are working with their arborist, the town tree warden, on looking at the areas they still need to complete, and under what conditions and what controls will they consider doing that. And we'll have to hear back from, from them before anything. Secondly, is the restoration of certain areas of the Broad Street Green, where there were four or five trees at the south end. The Village Improvement Association will kind of be the, the group that focuses that effort, and we will seek a public process over the winter months, in anticipation of a spring planting of whatever is decided at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
To the manager, I saw an article in the paper over the weekend about a blight ordinance in Rocky Hill that they're using to do something with Ames Property, which is vacant and nuisance ice. Or do any of our ordinances compare to that one, where we could do something with some of the blighted properties on the Silas Dean? The Fun Zone comes to.
We can check, but generally, if there's a complaint about, well, the grass or graffiti, the, the owners take care of it right away. But we'll check the Rocky Hill ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Madam Town Clerk?
I have nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to council actions, number 1A, acceptance of resignation from boards and commissions. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. From the Tourism Commission, Gina Delay, 167 Church Street, is resigning from the Board of Tourism Commission.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Madam Town Clerk, you make sure to please send her a letter of thanks for her service on that commission, please. And item 1B, appointments to boards and commissions. Councilor Montneyary?
For the Weathersfield Housing Authority, Levy Ofori, Tenant Commissioner, 43 Broadman Terrace, for a term 9/1613 to 6/3018. And the Tourism Commission, Carol Bruce, as an alternate, 381 Hartford Avenue, for a term 9/1613 to 6/3016.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? And Deputy Mayor?
To the Park and Recreation, William Leonard, as an alternate, 71 Center Street, from 9/1613 to 6/3015.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. On to number, there's no unfinished business under 3A, the year-end transfers, approval of transfers between the town departments and reserve funds for the year-end closure. Can I have a motion?
A motion to authorize the transfer of fiscal year 2012, 2013 expenditures between departments and funds per the attached transfer request.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thinking about it, Mayor Council, attached for your review and approval of the list of transfers to balance departments for fiscal year 2012, 2013, which is required to be done by the end of September in anticipation of the audit. We're requesting transfer some unexpended funds to the Technology and Radio and CNF reserves, and there's a list of those particular transfers. And as Councilmember Manusis stated, we'd like to use some of these remaining funds to purchase outright the vehicles, at least some of the vehicles we intended to lease. That way, it saves money in the 1415 budget. We don't have to budget lease payments, about $87,000 worth of lease payments, and just buy those outright.
Any questions of the Town Manager? Councilor Montneyary?
Thank you, just a couple of questions. Jeff, looking at the line items, I look, some of them are pretty self-evident, in terms of areas that went over, notable, I guess, are some of the, obviously, the big one was this, was the Sandy Reserve. Was that number net the FEMA reimbursement, the 311?
No, that was gross.
That's gross?
Yeah.
So we are, we are still anticipating, if I recall correctly, it was 170 that we're getting back from FEMA against that?
Well, you can do it two ways when you do this. You can take the revenue and offset the expenditure, which we did not do. We took the revenue as a revenue and the expense as an expense. So it washes out at the end of the year, but we didn't discount the expense by the revenue. We've received the revenue. So if you look at the revenue number, it's higher, that's because we didn't offset.
Okay, so that, the number from FEMA has already been posted into our revenue reserve?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's in the net number. When we talk about this 511, it's in there?
Yes.
Okay, well, I didn't see it in there. Is it just not noted as a line item?
It's not noted as a line item, it's a specific revenue.
And then, can you tell me what the CNF Reserve for 121 is for the police, which is a requested transfer? What that's covering?
That pays for their vehicles for the year, the purchase of their four vehicles that were in the budget.
Oh, that was already in the budget?
We, we budgeted to, to do a lease for those.
Yeah, that, okay, that was my other question. Originally, when we talked about doing the leases, I thought the argument we made in the leases is that it put less burden on the, on the budget, budget on a year-to-year basis, as opposed to a, a transfer. And I realize we have some of this money coming in right now because of a, a surplus, but wouldn't, why wouldn't we maintain that if that was in fact the case? Why wouldn't we keep that money in the system and, and continue to enjoy the benefit of the stretch? I know you said it'll save in one year, but I thought the argument for leasing is that it puts less burden on our budget.
Well, it does, and it's, it's a function of two things in this particular, we have the revenue, or, excuse me, we have the unexpendited budget authority to pay off the lease, to buy the vehicles, and it wouldn't be a one-year offset, that same $87,000 would be over the following three years.
Right.
So it'd be 87 a year for the next three years.
It's a spread, this is what we made the argument.
Right. And we're already benefiting from the excess funds by transferring almost half a million dollars to the fund balance, or our fund balance is growing already. We're not, we're not using any of that.
It exceeds our, it exceeds our recommended amount, but it could also be handy, particularly if we're, one of the things I'm thinking about is this issue with the high school that we've heard some concern about as it unfolds. I mean, would it make some prudent sense to, to raise that reserve even higher in light of that, as opposed to having the possibility that we're going to be making some hard choices? I know there was an article in the paper about all the asphalt stuff, but let's say we're one or $2 million beyond the scope of the approved referendum as we get down to it. Wouldn't it be smart to be building that reserve up now, as opposed to spending on vehicles that we already budgeted for? Just as one possible option, as I'm sharing.
Well, if, if we intend to spend money on the high school project, capital money on the high school project, we're going to have to raise the level of appropriation, because we won't get it back in terms of reimbursement, and it's not, and it's not under the appropriation level. So we, we went to the voters for an approved $74 million project. Anything above that, we're going to have to change that appropriation amount.
What I'm, what I'm thinking of is in terms of the line items that are going to go over budget. I, I realize it's, it's a more complex discussion than this, but I, I would favor raising more in the reserve, as opposed to doing some of the spending at the end. I realize some of these lineups make great sense, and we've got some over expenditures in line items, and some savings, and the transfers normally are relatively inconsequential. But there are some larger items here that, you know, just raise a little bit of eyebrow. Like, why are we increasing Trot's PO, for example?
Well, that will be.
Aren't we done with his work?
No, he's actually going to monitor and do the acceptance test on the new system.
But isn't that built into the expense? Why is that suddenly being increased?
Well, that provides a greater flexibility for him to be on-site during the construction process. And any maintenance issues we may have with the existing system through the construction of the new system.
Okay. I mean, I have some concerns about some of that. I'm not saying I'm going to vote against these lineups, but. I'm not saying I'm going to vote against these lineups, but, and Jeff did, Jeff Kotkin did share the lineups with me last evening. He's not here because he's, he's traveling for business, and we got the information last night and started to go through it. So, I mean, Jeff did share it. It wasn't, wasn't, it wasn't a surprise to me. But I just wanted to go over it publicly a little bit.
Any other questions?
Yeah, no, just to clarify for Paul too. I mean, I think we want to reduce our debt where we can, and this does that. And, because it's the ongoing operating expense, that actually is what we're taxing residents on. So, I think we have certainly more than enough in the, in our fund balance. And this is why I think it's wise to, to reduce our ongoing operating expenses because that's what impacts, you know, town residents.
Yeah. When you said, like, give me an example of where we're reducing our operating expenses.
$87,000 a year. There are future lease payments that we're not going to have.
We're going to buy those vehicles.
Yeah.
Yeah. Those other vehicles, we're going to...
I understand that part. I'm just saying we're front-loading it with a purchase. We're saying, well, instead of leasing it over three years, we're going to front-load it because we have some money this year, which, you know, I'd probably make the argument, I'd rather save it than spend it. But, because we budgeted that amount. I realize what you're saying. It's just, it's looking at it the other way.
Yeah. I mean, if that's the way you want to do, then what we would do is, is budget that $87,000 in following years and then put that in reserve.
Which we did. We did that already.
We don't want to, we don't want to put it in reserve now.
It's in the 15 budget. It's not in the current budget and next year's budget.
I know, but it was an appropriation we approved is what I'm saying. We appropriated, we appropriated those leases on those vehicles already. Those were approved this year, correct?
The leases were approved with the...
That's what I'm saying. I'm just saying we're changing. I'm not, I'm not saying I'm stuck on it. I'm just saying there is a difference in approach. And I might say, given some things that are happening, I would be looking to reserve more funds and spend them that way. But that, again, that's a way of looking at it. It's fine. I'm not taking great issue with it, but...
Just make one comment. That, that doesn't change that next year, we're still going to budget for new equipment purchases. Like, we haven't lost that budget item for new equipment. This is just affects us one over time. So, Paul, the idea is we are still funding our vehicle purchases every year like we should be. It doesn't affect that.
This was an opportunity...
This just gives an opportunity to lower, lower our possibly taxes and expenses.
This was an opportunity to target some leftover expenditures at specific purchases that have an outcome in the following year's budget. That's all that was.
Any other discussion? Council Roberts?
Just I had a question on the MDC. We got it, we're taking money from MDC and giving it to the Town Manager's account and the Town Attorney. Is that right?
Yes.
And how do we have a surplus in MDC?
MDC is on a different budget year than the town. So, they provide estimates on what their costs will be to us. So, we don't have an exact number when they asked us to budget for those things. So, we take their best guess, which is what they provide. And then, when they actually send out a bill, there's usually a difference.
Okay.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Okay. Dolores, do you have that?
We have two noes.
Correct.
And that's Councilor Roberts and Montanari?
Correct. Okay. Under 3B, the tax write-off authorization to write off taxes that are no longer collectible in accordance with state statutes. A motion, please.
A motion to authorize the Town Manager to write off $37,881.81 of taxes from the 1997 grant list.
And a second?
A second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'd ask Tax Collector Marlene Deser Gens to review this item with you.
Good evening. What this is, is the oldest list on the tax year. When the new grant list came due, July, the oldest one gets dropped off. Per state statute, we're not allowed to collect on the accounts.
Can we get a list, a list of those? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can provide. I understand it wasn't attached, but we can get that for you tomorrow.
Most of it automotive?
Yes. And there's a few, there's about 13 lots on there that have been carried from year to year.
So, it's the state's position if we can't collect them in 15 years, we just, you know, stop harassing them or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, what happens if we vote no? What happens?
They just sit out there.
Yeah.
No, but you said the state says we have to do it, so why are you not having a vote?
The system, when I close the year, the system automatically drops them off.
So, this vote really doesn't make any difference other than that we all feel good that we're voting to close it off?
But we recognize the loss as opposed to deluding ourselves into thinking we're going to collect it.
Any other questions, Council Roberts?
So, in theory, technically, people still own these lots, but they're just tax-free for the rest of their ownership?
Well, a lot of them are abandoned. They were different organizations in town. They had lots, like Pike Wog Village has a few. Some of them, the residents are deceased, and the family didn't want anything to do with them, so they just walked away from them. They are on the next agenda item that's coming up, though.
Okay.
Just to clarify, we're only writing off that year of taxes. So, future taxes, we could still try and collect.
They're still within the 15 years.
Yes.
Yeah, there's still 14 years of taxes to collect.
Of abuse, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Item 3C, the tax sale policy. Approval of a policy and procedure for the tax sale of those properties that these seriously delinquent, that are seriously delinquent in payment of taxes. A motion?
Motion to approve the policy and procedure for tax sale of delinquent property taxes.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. In an effort to address those real property issues that go uncollected for many years, the town, the tax collector recommended adopting a formal policy for the sale of these tax, these properties or the liens on the property so we could collect the taxes or finally get them off the rolls. A lot of these end up being, for the lack of a better word, almost fake value on the grant list because we know they're not going to be paid, they're not going to be recouped. But it shows up as value and it shows up as taxes being assessed against those. So, this is a process to clean up that system. Marlene and Mike Rona from Halloran and Sage are here to give the details on that.
Good evening. Again, Michael Rona from Halloran and Sage. Sometime ago, my office was asked to put together sort of an outline and advise the tax collector as to how, how to go about actually collecting taxes on these properties via tax sales. So, what we did is we put together an outline, which I believe all of you have before you. We put together an outline essentially stating, here's the benchmarks and the timeline. If you wanted to have a tax sale, here's what you have to do. Here's all the notices that have to go out, and here's all, here's the timeframe that things have to occur. Not included in the packet are actually all the forms that we also put together so the tax collector knows on such and such a date, I have to send out notice. Here's the notice I send out. I put in the variables and the notice goes out. There are, it's a very, it's not a complicated statute, but there's a lot to it. Rather than just read from my outline, I'd rather just open it up for discussion and have you folks ask whatever questions you may have.
Do Councilors have questions? Councilor Drake?
Yeah, the only question I had, we never had this before. What we have instead of this, I mean, we must have tax sales when we have foreclosure, no?
Yeah, we did, we did one before.
We did one before, on one property.
So, all the years that someone didn't pay, we've never taken the property and sold it? Just no procedure?
Right, that we found a record. That either means everybody paid their taxes or we wrote them off every 15 years.
Mike, it's probably been your experience that other towns are using this process more extensively than we have.
Many other towns are already... I'm sorry. Many other towns are already using this process. The reason being, I think, well, there's really two reasons. One, it's more cost-effective for the town. You're saving money on marshal's fees. You're saving money on appraiser fees. You're saving money on filing fees rather than using the judicial foreclosure process where obviously you're, the town is incurring all those expenses, which may be picked up later on if the homeowner pays the taxes, but may not. And those are obviously costs that the town may end up incurring. The other, the other benefit, I think, to a municipality in going about getting its taxes paid in this way is that this process does take a little bit longer than a judicial foreclosure. That may sound counterintuitive, but I think it actually provides the homeowners a little bit more time to come up with the money in order to pay these taxes. So, if they have to go out and get a loan, if they have to go out and borrow the money from a relative, whatever they're going to do, or keep squirreling money aside to pay it off, this is a process that can take up to nine months. So, that gives the homeowner some time to actually, rather than just the town going in, judicial forecloser, foreclosure, three or four months out, it's over. It does give the homeowner a little bit more time to come current on its taxes. A third, a third point will also be, it also gives some discretion to the tax collector. The tax collector does have the discretion under the statute to cancel the tax sale for any reason. So, and there's a lot of things that are not put into the statute that the tax collector would, that, if it's not in the statute, then that discretion would fall to the tax collector. So, I think it gives the town a little bit more flexibility in that sense.
Councilor Manus, it's on Councilor...
So, there's a redemption period of nine months for a homeowner to...
It's six months.
Oh, six months.
The process itself can, can take nine months because you have to give the first notice three months before the sales to, to occur. And then, you have the six-month redemption period afterward.
Right. So, if a private investor buys the tax lien and it's greater than the outstanding taxes due, then that flows to whom?
Well, are you talking about a tax sale?
A tax, a tax sale, yeah. So, that's the next step, right, the tax lien is being sold?
Right. So, you're, you're talking about a situation where the tax sale, the successful bidder at the tax sale bids more than the taxes.
Right.
That money would actually be put in escrow by the tax collector. If the property is not redeemed, or is not redeemed, then at that point, the tax collector, once there's no redemption, we know, we now know who the owner, the new owner is, has to then deposit that money with the Superior Court. In Weatherfield's case, it'd be New Britain. And then, a notice would go out to the homeowner that they can actually file an application with the Superior Court to get those excess proceeds.
So, then, the redemption includes a imputed, what, 18% redemption for the investor? Is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
18% for what?
So, if, if somebody redeems, the homeowner has the right to redeem the property within six months, but they, but they'd have to pay 18% on that?
As a penalty.
Well, that's not a penalty. It's the interest.
Interest and fees.
The, the longer they wait to redeem, the more they'll have to, the more they'll have to pay to redeem.
But that 18% is a part of the tax process. There's an 18% penalty now.
Yes.
Yeah, on top of that. Right.
No, no, there's not two 18s. There's just one 18%.
Councilor Drake?
The $10,000 of two years, is that typical what other people are doing or how that come off?
That, that's one of the matters that is left to the tax collector and you folks. It doesn't have to be that.
No, I understand it doesn't have to be, but is that typical? I mean, what other towns are doing?
It is. I checked with other towns, and it is.
And if we do do this, the 15-year thing we just did will eventually just go away then, right? Because everything's gone after two years, right?
Well, for, this will be for real estate, yeah.
It says motor vehicles too.
No, the tax sale would just specifically be for real.
Tax collection policy?
The process I'm describing is just real estate.
No, but it says here, tax collection policy of real and personal property and motor vehicles. And it says, you're right, real estate.
And motor vehicles are different.
Yeah, motor vehicles are different. Yeah, okay. I'm with you. It's complicated.
And when I was going through the details that you shared, it looks like there's some labor-intensive stuff, like all the notices and so forth. Is that being done by our staff, Marlene, or is that being done by a lawyer?
That I've left up to the tax collector. I told the tax collector, I will do as much or as little as the tax collector needs.
Spoken like a true lawyer.
I have, I have already drafted all of those notices for the tax collector. They really are just, obviously, following the statute, putting in the variables, the name of the taxpayer, the amount that's owed, when the tax sale is going to occur. So, those, those notices can be sent out by the tax collector.
Yeah, right. And let's assume we did it, went that route. Would that expense be taken off of the proceeds at a tax sale so that the net would then be affected? Or would it be the tax percentage first and then, and then a charge to the town?
What the statute envisions is that if, if, for instance, let's say that you folks wanted to do, I don't know, how many, how many properties are, are we talking about?
It was about 26.
26. You could theoretically do all 26 on one day. That might be a little ambitious. But let's say you did all 26. Whatever expenses you incur in getting those tax sales done, you would, you would prorate those expenses. So, it'd be 1/26 would be attributed to each sale. So, if somebody wanted to redeem, or if somebody wanted to be the successful bidder, they'd have to, in their bid, they would have to eat that 1/26 of those costs that were incurred.
So, the buyer pays the fee?
The buyer pays the fee. And, and it also includes, if, if, for example, I was asked to, to assist in the process, the statute does allow the tax collector to hire consultants or auctioneers or attorneys, and those costs can be passed along either to the successful bidder or to the, or in the redemption amount.
And, Marlene, have you had any thoughts on that, or is that still sort of in the discussion phase?
Yeah, we're kind of still in the discussion phase of that. We, I, I will tell you this, we have put forth every effort for the individuals that are on the list. It's been presented in the entrance office. I've sent notifications. The list was bigger. People have come in and met with me. We've gone over options they could get the tax paid, and that has worked.
Yeah, you've done a lot with that. Yeah, absolutely.
These are the residents that are left that there's been no communication, or some of them, they're deceased, and there's other people living in the house that technically have no legal right to it.
So, this is just putting some beef behind it. Very good. Thank you.
Well, is there any, any thought or consideration for, let's say, a senior citizen who lived in town for years and years and years? I know it's tough to pick people out, but I hate to think of a senior citizen couldn't quite do it. And eventually, you could take the property tax off the estate. I just, was there any discussion regarding something like that at a certain age?
No. Most towns, it's based on just the dollar amount because we do have to treat everybody the same, unfortunately, to...
Why do you have to treat everybody the same? Can't we do what we want to do?
Well, because then one person could say, well, you chose not to foreclose on them, but you foreclosed on me, and I meet the same criteria they did.
I'm talking about based on age, but you couldn't do that?
Well, if, if the town council wanted to adopt policy, then you, but you'd have to adopt that policy...
I'm just curious if there was any thought process in that at all. I'm just saying, there's, there's people, like, people come up and say, there's people struggling in taxes in town. It's, it's not cheap. So, I hate to think someone was very old and got to the point where, you know, weren't quite making it with the real estate tax, and we could take it from the estate. It would take some interest. I mean, it just seems to me that should be a policy we should think about because we shouldn't be that hard, I guess, at some, at some state. But, I don't know. To me, I would like to see something like that added in. I just don't think we should be so hardline with everybody.
Do we have any data about that? What percentage of these 27 in fact fit that category?
I don't know the, because we don't, with the houses, we don't know the age group. But most of them that I have talked to on the phone, they are not elderly.
I mean, I think David makes a good point.
I mean, I have no point passing this, but we can maybe look at adding that. Because, again, you know, you got $10,000 a year tax bill. It's, you know, and you're old. That's a, that's a big check.
There's nothing prevents us from pulling one or two out if they fit that category and looking at them individually, correct? I like, I like what's being done here overall.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Under 3D, the position reclassification, approval of reclassification for a police department civilian position. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the reclassification of the position of administrative analyst in the Weatherfield Police Department to that of the financial operations analyst.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. The police department has requested the upgrade of a position in their department. And consistent with the 818 contract, a job analysis questionnaire was filled out, which the duties were outlined and reviewed against other employees in that same group and found that, yes, an upgrade is warranted based upon the duties that is assigned to this particular position. So, staff is recommending the upgrade of the financial analyst position to, or, excuse me, upgrade the administrative analyst position in the police department to a financial operations analyst position. And Chief Sotran here is to answer any questions.
Do Councilors have any questions? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. 3E, disposal of town property authorization to sell by auction vehicles that are removed from the fleet. A motion?
A motion to authorize the Town Manager to dispose of old equipment and vehicles through sale at auction, sale to highest bidder, or sale as scrap metal.
And a second?
Second.
And he just, Mr. Town Manager?
These are vehicles that no longer serve their purpose and are looking to be disposed of due to maintenance, rust, or inoperability.
Any questions? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. 3F, town council... Three F, town council meeting dates, approval of calendar year two thousand fourteen meeting dates, a motion?
A motion to approve the schedule of town council meeting dates for two thousand and fourteen.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
There's your meetings, uh, twice a month. If you want to add more, we can add more. Just pick your dates. No, this is consistent with the practice of the current process.
Any questions? We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Three G, Mitchell on the Park, an eight-twenty-four review, referral to planning and zoning of a request for installation of a roof-mounted fourteen-to-fifteen-foot communication tower, can I have a motion?
Motion to refer to the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission under section eight dash, excuse me, section eight dash twenty-four of the Connecticut State Statutes, the consent to sublease between Mitchell on the Park and the town of Weathersfield for the placement of a communications tower and supporting ground equipment at two-twenty-six Prospect Ave.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, uh, as you know, the Mitchell on the Park property on Prospect Street, we own the ground that the building sits on, and lease the ground to the owners of the building. The owners of the building have, have asked us to approve their subleasing certain portions of the property, particularly the ground equipment, uh, for a Verizon tower that's about fourteen, fifteen feet tall on their roof. Verizon approached them and said, this is a good spot. Um, for us to consider that, we first have to send that to the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the appropriateness of that use. The question put to me today by, uh, was, what's, what effect does this have on the town? Do we receive a financial gain? Uh, one of the things we included in the consent to sublease is a requirement that in the lease, uh, the rent provisions of the ground lease be modified, that any rent, um, that the tower pays Mitchell on the Park is included in the gross rent calculation from which we get rent from the property owner. So right now, we get a portion of their, their revenue, which, due to their operations, has been minimal. Now, this rental income to Mitchell will be included in their revenue figures for payment of rent to us. So we'll get, we'll get a portion of this revenue from the tower.
Another question? Um, I saw there looked like a big shed that would be on the property, plus a tower, I mean, that's right in the middle of town, right at Millwoods. It, it seems a little odd that we would put something like that right there.
Well, this, this action tonight is just referring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission to even, to vet whether or not it's even something they think the town council ought to consider. There'll be a whole separate process if this goes forward, that the Planning and Zoning will have to review the actual detailed site plan of the equipment. So it'll go back to them at some point to look at location, uh, screening, noise, all those other items. And then they'll have to go to the State Siting Council, which has jurisdiction over all communication towers in the state. So this is just, should the town council look at this as a, as a possibility? And that's the question.
Okay, so we don't have to send it to them?
Send it to who?
We don't have to send it to P N Z.
And we wouldn't have to approve it if they approved it after it came back here.
Right.
It's gonna, it's gonna come back after approval?
Yeah, but why put them through the process if we don't think it's a good idea? I'd like, I guess, to discuss this a little more, it seems like an odd place to put a, a tower.
Uh, just, just interrupt, I agree with you, I think it's a lousy location, but truthfully, I'm interested in Planning and Zoning's opinions, though, because they kind of know the rules, so I'd like to see what they say, then we can, as long as we have a chance to reject it.
Well, that referral comes back to you, and then you would consider the consent to sublease at that time.
Has this come up before in any of the properties?
Well, Putnam Park has a tower, nothing this low to the ground.
Right.
Right, this is, I mean, this is unique.
It's kind of a first time for P N Z to really take a look at the question, then.
Yes.
No, this is not the tower, though, did you look at the...
No, I know, it's the...
Well, it's hard to tell, though, from the elevation, what it's really gonna look like.
Well, there's some discussion, should they put the shed on the roof, should they put it on the ground? I think this plan is still in somewhat a flux, but regardless, we're gonna have to amend the lease to allow them to do that.
And just a sidebar question, do these towers, has anybody examined if these towers do get installed, if they have impact on any of our communications efforts in town?
The Siting Council reviews that.
Who does?
The State Siting Council, they monitor those impacts, and they'll have to, this group will have to make a request to the Siting Council for approval, and that frequency issue will be part of that.
Yeah, 'cause that, I mean, that would be important, if it had any potential.
Any further questions? So we have a motion on the floor to refer this to planning and zoning for an eight-twenty-four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Four A is bid, under bids, award of bid for engineering firm to provide oversight and testing for hazardous waste abatement for the Weathersfield High School renovation project, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement with Fussin O'Neil Enviro Science LLC for hazardous materials abatement monitoring and testing services on the high school renovation project in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-four thousand and fifteen dollars.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, as part of the PCB and underground storage sink remediation process, we need to engage a consultant to do the necessary monitoring during construction and post-construction to make sure the materials aren't impacting the site, and that at the end of the day, the site is clean, and we can file the necessary reports with EPA in, uh, deep. Uh, the building committee went through what's called a request for qualifications process in which they interviewed, uh, firms based upon their qualifications, and then from there selected a firm and negotiated a price. I've put on the podium this evening for you the four vendors who were part of that process, and the prices proposed, and, uh, the chair and Mr. Turner are here tonight to answer any questions. This will be for the next, this is for the entire construction period of the project, three years, including the PCB remediation.
Do councils have questions?
I, I just didn't see the amounts of the other, oh, you put it on the podium.
I got it.
Sorry, I heard you say that, but it didn't register.
We're, we're...
I had a question.
Councilor Hurley?
Um, TRC seems, from what I heard, like a qualified company, and they seem to meet all the processes, or all the recommendations that you put forth, and it seems to be a lot lower of a bid.
Our, our, our basis of, of analysis was first qualifications, finding the most qualified firm, um, the committee, it was basically a subcommittee of, of the building committee, so it consisted of representatives of the building committee, the architect, the construction manager, uh, myself, uh, Sally Katz from our, our physical services department. So we all independently listened, you know, looked at the qualification statements, and then interviewed all four firms, uh, and felt without a doubt that Fussin O'Neil was the most qualified firm, okay? So we started with that level. Each of the firms submitted, uh, a request for proposals as well, uh, basically citing what their hourly rates were. Um, we didn't have like a bid form, per se, um, because as the manager says, it was a negotiated, uh, service, a professional service. So what we did was, in order to compare the costs of all of the firms, uh, the only one that gave us a comprehensive analysis with hours and specific people was Fussin O'Neil. So we applied their hours, and using the rates of the other firms to make the comparison that you're seeing in that, in that matrix, so...
Guess they had another question? Since Fussin O'Neil were, they, I think they were the ones who went and did all of the work, right? So they had, already had a leg up, that's why they put more detail? Did the other firms have a chance to do that?
Absolutely, we did, as again, we did not, uh, ask them in, in a specific format. We were more interested in the hourly rates that, uh, specific tasks, whether it be tests and/or the, uh, personnel that would be assigned, um, would cost, would cost the town. You know, we've, this is the, you know, we've, we've used three environmental firms along, along the path that we're at today, and, um, two of those firms were two of the firms that were submitted this evening.
Okay, so you're, you're satisfied that Fussin O'Neil then is the most qualified and can do the job the best?
Ab- absolutely.
So this was an RFQ, not an RFP?
That's correct.
So is this a similar process to the radio process?
It was a performance-based selection, yes.
Huh, okay.
And, and if you look on this, you look at the PCB soil, uh, and the unit prices, you're looking, the difference really is in the PCB, uh, between TRC and Fussin O'Neil, and that's really our big issue, we want to make sure we don't skimp on, is the PCB items. Because EPA still has to, uh, sign off at the end of the day, including the air sampling during construction.
Donna, just a question going back, I, when we look at the subsections that we have had evaluation of, of materials, and there's some PCB, there's asbestos, uh, there's other hazardous wastes, each of those sections, as they get evaluated, and a contractor is identified to complete that process, that, that goes out to bid, I assume, similarly. Why doesn't the contractor have the obligation to complete the testing and the submissions that this group is doing as part of their... Just help me understand that distinction, why, why they don't do that? Is that always historically a separated process, so that, uh, you have this? And then, and then if, if that's the case, just identify what they're doing for that amount. Are they actually overseeing the work and validating the work as being done? I mean, just help me understand that, because it's a pretty, pretty big ticket item, and it looks like they're just kind of overseeing.
It, it is a, a big ticket item, uh, and as the manager pointed out, this will last for the entire three-year construction cycle. The previous consultants under various contracts have identified all of the, the various types of hazardous materials that are at the site, the lead paint, the asbestos, the PCBs, the soil contamination from underground tanks, things like that. Each specific contour, contractor that will be assigned a specific task, and in, in most cases, it's the site contractor if it's outside, it may be a specific building contractor inside, or their subcontractor, they have to have specific licenses, they have to put together plans on how to remove and safely, you know, quarantine off an area to keep both the workers safe, the students safe, teachers, staff, what have you. Once that's removed, verify that it's been removed, and then document where that, that hazardous material is being taken, uh, you know, because it's gonna be off-site and disposed of at, at, you know, some licensed facility, so...
So Fussin O'Neil in that situation is taking a look at the, at various stages that a particular contract, let's, let's pick the PCB one that supposedly is leaching into the bricks.
Yes.
That contractor, when they're selected, is going to submit to Fussin O'Neil results of their completed work? And then would Fussin O'Neil do the actual testing?
That's correct, they will do the verification testing that it was done in conformance with that plan.
Okay, and, and again, for this amount of money, are we talking about twenty-five, thirty tests that they're gonna be completing? Hundreds of tests?
Hundreds of tests.
So are they gonna be on the site all the time?
Pretty much, while, while the hazardous material contractor is there, they will be there, yes.
And just one last point, I do note, there are four submitted bids for this, that you met with.
Yes.
Actual amounts were submitted for you to evaluate, is that correct? Slightly different than what happened with the radio system.
So if, if a bidder wanted to bid, and you deem that they weren't qualified, would you accept a bid from them?
Well, again, our, our basis of selection was not on the bid price, it was based on the qualifications first.
Thank you, Mike, and I agree with that process.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Thank you.
Four B, contract renewal, authorization for an extension to the contract with West Pro LLC for sidewalk maintenance and repair, can I have a...
I'll motion to authorize the town manager to extend the contract with Rest, West Pro LTD for sidewalk repairs and maintenance for the term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of thirty thousand dollars.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, uh, we do sidewalk work each year, West Pro, uh, we bid this contract in two thousand and ten, and he's still holding, well, actually, we've bid it before, but the price we're getting is still the price he bid in two thousand and ten. Uh, there was a question on that, um, and do we believe that we're, uh, there's been an increase or decrease in concrete pricing since then? We believe there's been a ten to fifteen percent increase in contract pricing since two thousand and ten. Uh, Mike's here to answer any questions. There was a question at the budget finance meeting about the, the texture and the, and the conformity of the new concrete versus the sidewalks in those existing locations, maybe Mike can, can talk a little bit about that as well?
Certainly, uh, when sidewalk concrete is poured, there's two, there's two types of Portland cement concrete, type one and type two. So there is a slight color variation in the cement itself. But I think what you're seeing, uh, as a variation, when a new slab is poured next to an old slab, is just the wear, the, the time wear, um, of, of the older slab. There are portions of, uh, for instance, Old Weathersfield, where the sidewalks were poured, um, and they actually let the concrete start to harden up, and then use a, a, like, almost like a power washer, if you will, to expose the stone, to try and give it an aggregate stone, uh, look, a darker, a darker look. Um, we don't normally do that today, you know, we just try and match in with a broomed finish to, you know, make it non-slip and what have you. But, um, there's not a lot you can do with the color, I mean, there are color additives you can add to colored and stamped concrete, for instance, but I think to try and match, uh, you know, it would start to become cost prohibitive.
Deputy Mayor?
If I may, Mike, um, if you could do me a favor, please, um, go to the corner of Cedar Street and Crest Street, and look up Crest Street, and you'll see all the repairs they made, and yes, the sidewalk patch, I mean, they repaired the sidewalks that had to be replaced. It's, um, aesthetically, I think it looks horrendous. If you look at that, I think it degrades from the entire street. Then I'd like you to go to the corner of Wells Road and Ivy Lane, uh, the gentleman, number six Ivy Lane, who did his, had his sidewalk repaired by a, not a different gentleman in town. That sidewalk is, was put in in nineteen sixty-four, sixty-three. The fellow that put the new slabs in, they, they almost look identical, and it's aesthetically, it looks a whole lot better. So I don't know what this contractor did compared to Westport, I'm not saying Westport's doing a bad job, I mean, they go around and do their job. But, uh, I, I would like you just to maybe, and come back next time, but look at Crest Street, how, how those sidewalks came out, and what, what you think the street looks like. And then look at the corner of Ivy Lane and Wells Road, and you tell me which one looks better.
Okay.
And I think to keep Weathersfield looking like Weathersfield, we gotta really, you know, take a hard approach and, and look at these things, because little by little, it's gonna start looking like the, the South End of Hartford.
Hey, I used to live in the South End of Hartford.
Me too, but not, many years ago, it's changed, it's changed, it's changed, it's changed, thanks, Mike.
Any other questions of the Town Manager or of Mike? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Thank you.
Number four C, authorization, authorized solicitation of bids for a new fire truck for the Weathersfield Volunteer Fire Department, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the solicitation of bids for a new fire truck for Company Two.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, as we discussed during the budget process, uh, the fire department's requesting the replacement of a nineteen eighty-one, uh, fire apparatus for Company Two. There is a, uh, desire to replace the fleet on a three-to-four-year basis. We took delivery of our last, uh, new apparatus four years ago, uh, so this is, this is gonna end up being a little longer. It's gonna be, uh, probably a year for construction. The specifications or the timeframe for the bids hasn't been filled in yet, so we'll have to do that. But staff is, uh, asking for authorization to go ahead and solicit bids, the results will come back here, of course, for approval. Chief Schroll is here this evening to answer any questions regarding the vehicle.
Councilor Hurley?
Um, I didn't have a question on the vehicle, I think Jaffe just skipped one. One of the points was, uh, that if we do every three to four years, vehicles get replaced, the vehi- of their vehicles will get replaced every thirty years.
Yes.
So it takes, it'll take thirty years to go through all the vehicles, so every thirty years, we would replace them. Like this vehicle, it would be thirty years before it got replaced again.
Right.
If it needed to be.
If it needed.
Councilor Drake?
Yeah, um, the, the only, the only question I have is, well, there's two questions. Why, why do you think it's so important that the cab and chassis be made by the same manufacturer? What would be wrong with a manufacturer subbing out the cab, bringing it and assembling it? I'm not sure why we want to pin them down that hard. And the second item, maybe it's part of the same question, specifying all the accessories makes sense to me exactly, because you want certain things.
We standardize most of our equipment on all of it.
I got, I got no problem, it makes sense to me, but in terms of the, the other stuff, the, the chassis and so forth, it seems to be a very specific, you're gonna be able to get multiple bids with this, I, I know that I'm sure it's favorite guys you want, but it seems ve- very, very tight in terms of not getting any competitive bids.
The problem, some of the problem we have is we have to design it to the facilities that we have. We have a, a firehouse that was built back in nineteen fifties, you know, we have height requirements, we have size requirements. Uh, this type of vehicle will fit in the apparatus bay that it has to be in.
Yeah, but you gave a lot of minimum requirements, you didn't give maximum O Ds, did you? Didn't, I didn't see any O Ds.
I don't know what you have for...
I have the big spec.
The big spec.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be in the beginning of the spec, then, you know, the, the size requirements that it has to have.
has to have for the room that it has to fit in or the bay that it has to fit in. The bay door is only 10 foot 6 inches high. So the manufacturer has to make sure that they build something that'll fit inside that firehouse. That's why there's a lot of minimum dimensions in there.
Okay.
Cab and chassis, we don't need, we don't want a guy from down the street that's going to build some frame rails, bring it to another guy down the street and put a cab on it and then something happens and it's always, you know, whose fault is it? One manufacturer, one vendor, sole source.
You wouldn't feel comfortable that was the guy who sold it to you's responsibility?
Excuse me?
Seriously?
I, I didn't hear you.
You wouldn't feel comfortable it's the guy who sold it to you, the manufacturer, the whole fire truck's responsibility? I'm just worried about we're pinning this down so tight that you're only going to get one bid and, you know...
I would have to say that we would not want two different manufacturers putting the fire truck together. One manufacturer buying a cab from somebody else and a chassis from somebody else and put it together in the backyard. So we want one manufacturer to build the whole vehicle from start to finish.
What are you, what are you going to do? What if you can do it, only get one bid? I'm good, I have no issue what you're looking for. I think you want to get a real good thing that's going to last this 30 years. What if you only get one bid? What are we going to do? I'd be...
That's up to the forefathers of the town.
Okay.
We bring back the information that that comes in.
I mean, I just look at, I understand all the accessories you want because every manufacturer can say, you're right, you want one of these, these, to put it on the cab and the chassis.
Any manufacturer.
But I'm worried about you pin the cab and chassis down so tight, you're only going to have one guy who's going to be able to do it.
The items that are specified by name, they're not proprietary, so any manufacturer can get those items.
Right.
Any manufacturer get a Cummins engine, any manufacturer get an Onan generator, any manufacturer can get a David Clark headset system.
Again, I got no problem with that. I'm worried about the chassis and the cab. You've pinned it down to one guy, whoever that is, who's going to buy all this. But let's see what happens. Again, I, I don't want to be cheap here. I want to do it right.
I don't think we're stringent enough to pin, pin it down to cab and chassis by one person.
Okay.
But we are stringent enough that we have to build something that fits in the fire house.
Oh, no question about it. No, I understand that, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Number 6A, regular meeting minutes for July 23rd, 2013. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any additions, corrections, changes?
Give me a minute to get to them.
You got to read them, read them.
Well... Pages are... This is August 26th, right?
No, this is July 23rd.
Page 126.
Oh, page 126.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Any corrections, omissions?
Hold on. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I guess I'm good.
You're good? After all that?
Couldn't find my name in it anyway, so...
Okay, the question had been on a vote table that passed 8-1, and it was, in fact, Counselor McAllister who had voted no.
So that's been...
It's on page 11.
So that was corrected?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's, there were other corrections made, I believe. They were spelling things that they didn't like and they didn't, and I think striking out the word ferre for F-E-R-R-E, striking out civil for changing to civic.
Everybody okay with the changes?
Yep.
We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. The 6B, regular meeting, August 19th, 2013. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Corrections, additions, deletions? Concentrating hard.
I am, I'm sorry. I didn't look at these before. Okay.
You're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Special meeting, August 26th, 2013. A motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Corrections, omissions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, thank you. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Colantonio?
Good evening again. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. About tonight, I found out that basically, I've been here for 40 years, so I knew that, not tonight. I could have really refused to pay taxes the first year and the only thing I would owe right now is 15 years' worth of taxes? Because after a while, I guess, you know, they, shucks, I missed an opportunity of a lifetime. But anyway, the second comment I want to make is that, and maybe I misunderstood, I guess we did get qualification for the PCBs, you know, in the high school and whatnot, and then we asked for, for a price. I guess, you know, when you ask for a price, you go for the lowest price. Why did we ask the four forms if they were not really qualified, if there was only one qualified there? And if I were one or the second bidder, let's say, why would I want to bid on anything from the town of Weathersfield anymore? Because even if I'm the lowest bidder, I'm not going to get the job anyway. I think that's ridiculous. The third thing, I guess, you know, in front of the high school, they just did the repayment. And they put a left turn lane, which is good. I like it. Except now that as you head it south on Walker Hill Road, and you have to really hug that curb, and right at, I guess, on the south side of the driveway, there's a little trench. And I'm concerned that one of these days, like, you know, my front end alignment is going to go completely. And as more cars going to go by there, that's going to be a hole. Why didn't they fix that particular area before they changed the payment markings? But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. Tonight, you're authorizing the solicitation of, for bids for a new fire truck. And, you know, during these hard times, for citizens of Weathersfield, here we go, again, borrow and spend. And that's where we're headed. Borrow, spend, taxation will follow. Typical, typical. And then what are you going to buy? Something that doesn't have longevity for parts, like you have been doing? I mean, I hope that that's part of your qualifications, that they will guarantee parts. So when the thing gets to be 30 years old, which only has 30, 40,000 miles on it, which is still a cream puff, it still should be valuable to us instead of $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 that you're going to sell the current 30-year-old fire engine for. It's just throwing money away. The current one, I'm sure does well. You can't get parts? That's hard to believe. Also tonight, there was some discussion about the Army Corps of Engineers and, you know, and that process with the Army Corps of Engineers is very slow. And that's good that you're going to avoid that. Just think, you're just as slow as they are in doing things. Look at our shared services. We missed a great opportunity thanks to our team here that let the Board of Education hire on a finance director slash personnel person who could, where we could have consolidated those two, their group and our group together, town side group and the Board of Education group, but that's out of the picture now. And that would have been the easiest thing to consolidate, yet we lost that great opportunity because we're so slow, just like the Army Corps of Engineers. You know, there was some talk tonight about the farmer's market and that they want to make it into a nonprofit. Why do they want to keep it, why do they want to make it into a nonprofit? Why not just for profit? Because nonprofits probably get benefits from the town of Weathersfield and the towns that they're in. I mean, don't we give money to, didn't we back upfront money to some nonprofit like the PTO for $50,000? They're not the town of Weathersfield, but we backed them. Maybe that's what them, the farmer's market being a nonprofit, just might be in that position then to continue to get benefits from the town, whereas a private shouldn't be able to or wouldn't be able to. And I think that there would be some differences. We're talking about $400,000 savings or leftover money, surplus from the town of Weathersfield. I mean, we didn't have any savings or returning money from the Board of Education per the discussion the other night. They were down zero. They spent everything like normal. At least the $400,000, and I do agree that go out and some of these items that you're going to buy on lease, I'd rather see you spend that money than put it away because we know it'll get raided. If it's sitting in an account somewhere, it'll get raided by this town council. You'll pull it and put it up for one of your other projects that are out of sight, not even on the radar screen or for special interest. So, yeah, go, go, go spend that $400,000 on leases that are in the budget just to relieve that those leases don't take place. The radio station or the radio system, as I have said, there's very little in the minutes that even mentions that radio system and the problem that we now have been hearing over the last several months. I don't know why we haven't heard about it. But it's really suspicious that it's only to spend more money. And we don't have that money. We don't, you know, going out, it's going to continue to be difficult for all of us. And spending, spending money, going out on loans or finance is not a healthy thing for the town. Paying cash is much better. And, but, again, $5.2 million is a lot of money. And with the warranty that the manager wants or the council wants along with the regular price. So, I don't know. I disagree with any of that spending on cash, on credit. There was mention tonight about accountability for the town financial data. I've mentioned that numerous times over the years because I end up getting that information for my own use. And it would be good if you did put all of that up. I mean, the manager knows, he's seen my spreadsheets and what I do with it. His organization, Mr. Dudley is a very talented man and could easily put that up on the website in a fashion that I do, that I, that I work, that I put it into. And when you're working with Excel, it's all the details in the background and all you're seeing is the front, the main portion of all the, all the numbers in consolidation. All you got to do is click on it and it'll show you the details. That would save people from coming in here from asking, why is such and such a line item X amount of dollars? Well, if you just click on it, you'll see all the details for each of the years, each of the years. Town could do that.
Mr. Young, can you summarize, please?
Yes. You could also do that for the payroll. That would be neat. Put the whole payroll on there, the pensions that we had that we're paying out, put that on there year by year in column form using Excel. I think, I think it would be a great asset to the town. Now I have to come down and see the manager about this next year information that I want. And I'll be touching base, touching base with him very, very soon. Thank you very much.
I look forward to it, absolutely.
Very soon.
You're welcome anytime.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Krug?
Good evening. David Krug, 149 Broad Street. I don't have much to say. I could say that all of you are incompetent and should resign, but I won't say that. But since election is coming up, I will say that all of you should resign except for the Democrats, which I am. And John? (laughing) John, I met you at the Keenan Foundation picnic and you were very friendly with me and I, you moved me closer to your side, but I am not on your side. But all you got to do is do something nice for Lithuanians and Koreans in town. We are the real minority. I'm half Korean, half Lithuanian, and then maybe, maybe you'll get my vote. But seriously, Manusso's mentioned something about the schools that I had mentioned, must have been a year ago, about the parking. And I realized parking is a problem. I've tried to park in other schools over the years. I went to Doc Severson concert in Manchester and I had to park blocks away to find a parking spot. And they didn't have much parking there. And Weathersfield, I went to a football game and I parked at the farthest lot, almost as far as Wintergreen Woods. And I got there late and I could see how parking is a problem. So if we can get more parking for, for big events, that is a legitimate issue. And it makes me think of, I mentioned I went to Doc Severson concert in Manchester, and Manchester has a lot of these big national acts. And many years ago, when I was in high school in '82, I went to a Maynard Ferguson concert in Rocky Hill. Now, I don't remember too many concerts we've had in Weathersfield with that, with that international status of, level of bands, but it would be great if we got some of those, those bands. But parking is a real issue. And all of the, all of the arguments you made, Manusso's, I've made, and I've got the same responses, that it's not part of the school, it's complicated because it's park, it's part of a park and you can't change things that easily. But I don't know all the details. But, and there's another thing I've heard from Mr. Drake about the forgiving taxes or giving leniency to senior citizens and taxes. Well, I could see how that could be a problem. Once you put that ordinance or whatever it's called on the books, people are going to say, well, I can't pay for it. I'll just put this in the, in the name of someone who's a senior citizen. I don't have to worry about it. And you know that's going to happen. So it can be abused. So I don't think there's any easy solution to that either. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Krug.
David, thanks for agreeing with me. Do I have to resign soon now? Still?
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Mr. Miller?
John Miller, 45 Hollings Street. Mayor, members of council. Couple of points I want to make. I took the time to go out and really look at these tennis courts, keeping in mind that you're spending what... you're spending, what, I don't know, four, four fifty, some number like that to move them. The last I heard was they're moving eight or ten feet east and maybe three feet north. And, you know, the tennis courts that you have out there, they have some cracks. There is no structural problem that's visible with the courts. I went out after a light rain because usually you can see a few puddles or something if they're, if they're not graded perfectly or if there's uneven settlement. There's certainly no crack that would ever cause a bad hop in a tennis match. You could play the way they are. So rather than move them the distance you are that you're moving them and at that amount of money, if you want to have something that's better than what you're going to have when they finish, put an inch and a half bituminous surface coat on it. I guarantee you, it'd be better than what's going to be thereafter. And you'll do that for twenty-five percent of what you're going to spend. If you want to spend less than that, cut that in half, just put a sealant on them. Will seal the cracks, they'll look beautiful, and you'll do it again in three, four years. Because any large bituminous surface like that is going to crack. Your new one will be cracked in a few years. But to spend that amount of money for what you're doing on that side of the field, the north side of the school, is, you know, it's just foolish with all the other things you've got to spend money on. Now, you know, obviously, my own thoughts, if you did that, I don't know yet why we're moving the softball field. And I know I spoke on that at the last meeting, and I said, keep in mind, you're filling that four feet. And I was commenting on the trucks, you know, bringing in material to raise it four feet. And I thought to you, that's a lot of trucks. I don't know whether, it must be four, five thousand yards coming in for that. But I know afterwards, I, it was mentioned about my comments, and I guess my comments were corrected, quote, and, but the, you know, the idea or the representation that you're going to use, that you have a balanced site out there, and you're going to use the material that you dig out of the trenches and dig and excavate for the gym and footings and what have you, and fill four feet at the tennis courts. If anybody thinks they're going to compact that stuff, then you've got a line straight upstairs that says you're going to have a drought between now and when you get the job built. Because I'm sure some of you remember, you towed the field before we fixed it. That material, you can't compact it. You will have trucks in there if they're going to take the material from the south side of the school around the, to the north side of the school, and that's the material you're going to use. Now, I, obviously, at the last meeting, I was wrong. I assumed you had to bring in suitable material for that. But as was stated, that apparently that material can be used to, for the four feet of fill, and I'm saying, all right, the trucks won't be coming in loaded with material for Walk Hill. But it was also noted after the last meeting that you've got thirty to forty thousand yards of material going out. So whether the trucks come in loaded or empty, there's going to be a lot of trucks doing something. I guess, the way I understand the job now, they'll be coming in empty and taking material out. So that, what you're attempting to do out there is just one, you know, it's going to be one magnanimous headache. And I can picture trucks trying to bring material in there, and if you've started compacting this stuff, I can picture tractors in there pulling the trucks out. That's how bad that situation can get if, you know, usually, October, November, whenever you're going to be doing that, we're apt to get a pretty, pretty good rain. And with that material, it'll only take one rain for the plight of building that parking lot to, that'll be it. But, again, and I know you've heard me too many times for you because you've heard me too many times for me, but if you would put the parking lot down at Eagle Drive and Folly Brook, for one thing, it obviously could have been built now. You'd make a good case that it should have been built by now, and I assume it would have if you were going to do it. But I was sitting in a, a couple of weeks ago, in a coffee shop, and I really wasn't generating discussion because I don't know who was at the table next to me. But there were three couples sitting there, and the big topic of discussion was their children's parking at the high school, the fact that the seniors are in some kind of a lottery or something. But it's a gross inconvenience for some seniors not to have parking. And all of this, again, could be solved if you could just look at that again, and it's not too late. Until you break ground, it's not too late out there.
Mr. Miller, can you summarize, please?
Yeah, I thought I was. Sorry, I came a long way and had a rush to get here. But, anyway, I'd urge you, you know, you're spending a lot of taxpayer money, and I just would say, somebody take one more look at this damn thing. You can, you can decide tomorrow to build that parking lot, eliminate a lot of the problems you got. And again, if you free up, you know, the four hundred and something, that's on the tennis courts, another couple hundred, there's no reason to move that softball field. You won't be nickel and diming these things of, should you be cutting another eighth of an inch off the pavement or something to do this job. You'd have plenty of money. So I just think somebody's got to take a hard look at it and don't charge your head with the mistakes which I think you're going to make, so. And I'm not going to bother you anymore with it, but I had to go out and look at those tennis courts because from what I heard about them and what, you know, what was being represented, it's not going to happen, so. That's the summary, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, can I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second? Someone second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions, thank you.
Can we have like a five-minute break?
That's it.
That's it. That's fine.